Greetings, everyone. I see that it is 5:30. I'm just checking the screen to see that we have a quorum. One, two, three, four. We do. Okay, very good. Let me just double-check that. One, two, three, four, at least a quorum. Okay, very good. Then I'm going to start and gavel in with my trustee gavel here. The October 20th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 5:31. The governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to AB 361 and YCCD Resolution Number 21-22.03. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. And I always like to give a shout-out to some important people behind the scenes who continue to make this virtual platform possible. And that's Scotty Gonzer, Tanisha Jackson, Sargon Yadigar, Graciela Molina, Kimberly Gibbs, and Jeff Swank. Thank you so much for everything you're doing to make this work. We welcome the board members and others who are participating via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video call has been muted with the exception of the board members, the student trustee-elect, and the chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. But the district will also make the recording available on the YCCD YouTube channel for 30 days in accordance with our board policy. As a reminder, board members are asked to raise their hand, to use the raise-hand feature in Zoom when they wish to speak. And everyone is encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested that public comment be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud by staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. And persons seeking to make an in-real-time public comment may do so at the time of the agenda item and are asked to use the raised-hand features. I ask the trustees to mute themselves at this time as I ask trustee Garrett to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Chair Vulcan. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Garrett. Moving on to 4.3 roll call to establish quorum. Board stenographer?
Thank you, trustees. In addition to confirming that you are present, I'll ask that trustees also respond to the three questions listed in the agenda. Before, can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? I'll start with Student Trustee-elect Arshia Amir Soleimani.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Antonio Aguilar.
Present and yes to all three questions.
Thank you. Trustee Leslie Beg.
Yes to all three questions.
Vice Chair Darian Garrett.
Present and yes to all three questions.
Trustee Nancy Hinton.
Present and yes to all three questions.
Trustee Jenny Nicolau. I don't see her in the room.
She said she's going to be about 15 minutes late. She texted me just now.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Milton Richards.
Present and yes to all three questions.
And Board Chair Margie Balkan.
Present and yes to all three.
Thank you.
We'll move now to 4.4, which is report out from closed session. At this time, there is nothing, no reportable action to report out from closed session. Moving into, onto 4.5 to swear in our new student trustee. On behalf of the board, actually, before I do that, if we could just get him on screen again with his video for this part, let me just see if I can see him. I'm looking for, there he is, Arshia. Great. So, on behalf of the board, I officially welcome Student Trustee-elect Arshia Amir Soleimani. You'll help me with that. At this time, I ask Chancellor Young to conduct the swearing-in of our new student trustee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are very happy to have a student trustee from Columbia College. At YCCD, the student trustee alternates between MJC and Columbia. This year, it is a turn for Columbia College. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Arshia Amir Soleimani. And the oath of office, and then he becomes an official student trustee. So you have the oath sent to you, Arshia. So rather than me reading all word-by-word and then you repeating after me, I'm going to ask you to read and solemnly swear. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I, Arshia Amir Soleimani, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
It's a great opportunity for you to participate in this service position. And I look forward to working with you, representing our students at both Columbia and MJC. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chancellor. Wait, don't go away yet. Arshia Amir, I want to say this. Arshia Amir Soleimani. How did I do?
Perfect. Correct.
Okay, so congratulations and welcome. We're so happy to have you here. And we look forward to your participation and input and especially student perspective into the work we do at the board level. So if you wouldn't mind just taking just a minute or two to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I've been attending Columbia and for several years now. I've attended MJC also. So both campuses hold a special place for me. I'm a math and physics major, transferring next year. And I like to ski. And, yeah, I'm just very grateful for this opportunity. So I'm a peer mentor and a tutor on campus also, so.
Oh, we're delighted to have you join us for our meetings and really sincerely look forward to your participation and welcome. Thank you. All right, moving on to 4.6, which is changes in order of business. The board reserves the right to modify the order of business in a manner that it deems appropriate by consent of the board. At this time, I ask trustees if there is an interest in changing any order of the business on the agenda. I see a hand raised by Milton Richards.
Yes, I want to move item 8.2 concerning the resolution for consideration of COVID vaccine up to the top of the list, right after item 4.14.
4.1, go to 8.
Or sooner, but I want that to be the first thing we discuss tonight.
Okay, very good. Any objection by, I got to go to gallery view so I can see everybody. Any objection by trustees? Seeing none, we'll move 8.2. I don't have it, just because I've got a huge packet here. Is it in fact 8.2? Okay. We'll move 8.2.
I actually was prepared and looked it up and made sure I'm looking at it. It's 8.2, yes.
Very good. Then we'll move it to, just a second.
I thought after 4.14.
Well, we'll move it to the beginning of action items, which is, I'm thumbing through that. Unless someone can give it, did it, action items begin at Section 7? Or did you want to move it before that?
I wanted to do, I wanted to do it as quick as possible because I know we got a lot of people that are interested in this. And I think it's the most important thing on the agenda tonight. And I want to get the discussion while everybody's fresh. And I don't want people to drop off because they waited too long. So as soon as parliamentary as possible, have the discussion, I want to have it.
I'm seeing the spot, which would be right at 4, right after 4.14, public comments.
Which is what I suggested, Madam Chair.
Why am I repeating myself or yourself? Okay, there we go. So seeing no objection.
Chair Balkan, I just wanted to point out, we do have a presentation guest on the redistricting process. Did you?
I don't care about that. I want this done first. I'm sorry. I want this moved up. They can wait. They're getting paid. They can wait.
Any objection from the board to move it to just after 4.14? Seeing none, we'll move it to that spot. Okay, very good. Thank you. And thank you, Graciela, for that reminder that we have guests as well doing presentations. Okay, moving on to 4.7 through 4.13. This is approval of minutes, and I'd like to table this, all of these items because grateful to Graciela for having put these all together. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven meeting minutes. The board just got the remainder of them tonight in board docs. And I really want to be able to give the board enough time to review them. So with your permission, we'll table 4.7 through 4.13 to the next regular meeting agenda. Is there any objection? Seeing none, moving on then to 4.14. Let me just get to my spot here. Okay. Public comments, here we go. Okay, the board stenographer, this is 4.14, public comments. The board stenographer provided, the board copies of public comments received via email. And those public comments constituted comments about the item that has just been moved up to follow these public comments, item 8.2. And we received 21 written public comments. So, and I read every single one of them. And I have faith that my fellow trustees did as well. But I wanted to acknowledge to those people who wrote in public comments, your comments have been received and will become part of the board agenda and the board minutes. And I would like to, at this time, ask the board stenographer to introduce in-real-time public comment requests. And while we're entertaining these, I'm assuming these, we're really entertaining public comment requests around 8.2. Is that correct, board stenographer?
Well, are you, I believe, trustee Richards asked at 8.2, start after 4.14?
Okay, so we'll exhaust 4.14, public comment, and then introduce public comments on the next item. Got it? Okay, so for those of you who are raising your hands already, we're looking to introduce in-real-time public comment requests for anything that is not already on the agenda. So I know this is confusing because we see hands raised right now. So if your hand is raised, I'm assuming you want to talk about something that is not already on the agenda. Okay, I see you correcting. Yeah, very good. Okay. Sorry, this is just the way we have to operate in terms of the Brown Act. Very good. Board stenographer, is there any in-real-time public comment requests on any items that are not on the agenda?
It does not appear that there's any raised hands.
Very good. Seeing, hearing no comment, the record should reflect that there were no comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Great. Now we'll move to 8.2. Let me get to that item. My big packet, sorry.
Page 83. Of 241.
Yeah, I'm getting there. Sorry, gang, it just took me a minute. Okay, very good. Very good. 8.2. YCCD, 8.2 is YCCD Resolution Number 21-22.07, a resolution for consideration of a COVID vaccine and/or testing mandate. And first, I'd like to, I'm sorry, everybody, I'll just, my paperwork is not. I'm looking for the resolution, Graciela.
Oh, okay.
It's behind.
It is on page 135 of 241.
I apologize.
Just before the green sheet.
Yeah, there it is. Okay, sorry. It's just, okay, cumbersome a little bit. No problem. Very good. So this resolution of the Board of Trustees directing the chancellor or his designees to develop and implement a testing requirement for COVID-19 infection. I'm going to ask you to indulge me as I read the resolution. The resolution says, whereas on March 17th, 2020, the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees unanimously passed a resolution declaring emergency conditions due to the novel coronavirus SARS-CoV-2 COVID-19. And whereas the district recognizes that risk factors vary widely according to age and comorbidities. And whereas the district has taken a range of measures at district facilities to prevent and reduce the spread of COVID-19, including compliance with state and/or local public health guidelines and requirements, mask requirements, improvement of air filtration systems, enhanced disinfection protocols, requiring a COVID-19 symptom and past exposure self-reporting form each day in which an employee or student plans to come on campus. And whereas the colleges have regularly communicated the benefits of vaccination and offer vaccines on campuses at no charge. And whereas the district desires to allow freedom of choice in making personal health decisions. And now and therefore be it resolved by the YCCD Board of Trustees that the board directs the chancellor or his designees to disseminate information to employees and students about state and federal requirements and to provide periodic updates from national and regional public health authorities on COVID-19 vaccines' benefits, possible side effects, and booster recommendations, as well as current illness rates in the areas we serve. And be it therefore resolved, the Board of YCCD directs the chancellor or his designees to take the actions necessary to develop and implement a COVID-19 testing requirement for all utilizing facilities at all district locations or working on campus who choose to remain unvaccinated, semicolon, those who have recovered from COVID-19 and choose to remain unvaccinated, semicolon, as well as those who have been vaccinated. This testing program will be flexible in order to respond to current circumstances and variants. And tests will occur at reasonable time intervals that are designed to provide increased safety against the spread of COVID-19, but not be punitive. These measures and any future measures taken by the chancellor and/or his designees will be subject to board review and confirmation in accordance with district policies. For, lastly, this resolution sunsets on August 20th, 2022, with the understanding that the board will revisit it in March of 2022. Now, before, and the way, you can take that off the screen for a second. So before I go through the process of taking public comment and exhausting that public comment, which we've been so grateful to receive, having held a special meeting on September 20th, specifically and exclusively to hear public comment on this question. And then at a special meeting on September 27th, where the board reviewed a draft of a resolution. And at that meeting, the board directed a subcommittee of the board to convene, to work out the draft of that resolution to align with the incredible volume of public input that we received, both from staff, student surveys, staff surveys, public comment in general. That group met, that group of three board members met to draft the resolution that you see before you tonight. And I want to make a few clarifications on behalf of the three people who drafted this. And I want to, especially grateful to Leslie Beggs, who really did the lion's share of sort of putting everything we heard into a resolution that, as you know, I've said, quote, "meets everybody in the middle." But those were Margie's comments. That's not what the board said. Those were Margie's personal comments. But the clarification that I sensed from reading some of the comments so far is that the, that the last paragraph really directs the chancellor to work with his leadership and advisors to design a testing schedule that is reasonable based on the conditions of the regions in which we all live. I live in Topeka County. A lot of you on the screen live in, maybe, maybe San Antonio County. But we're all different. So reasonable within the regions in which we live and taking into account those who are vaccinated and those who are unvaccinated. And I'm not going to editorialize what I think that might mean. That's up to the district, which we've asked in this resolution to design a schedule that meets the needs and requirements of their region that responds to both vaccinated as a group and unvaccinated as a group, giving the district that flexibility to implement a testing schedule commensurate with those populations. So, secondly, I'm already inclined to suggest also that the word "not to be punitive" was designed to not separate in any way the person the personal beliefs of some people who wish to be vaccinated and some people who wish not to be vaccinated. That word punitive was, was designed and assigned to not differentiate between personal beliefs. However, I can already see, and I'm just suggesting to my colleagues that, 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 that word may be confusing in the Board, should this be approved, in the district's ability to, to, to implement compliance with the intention of this resolution. So it might be something to consider as we listen to public comment and then discuss as a board that those words might have been misplaced in terms of its intention. And, and lastly, and I will go next to public comment because that's the most important part, is I, I, I can't say enough about the process of listening to our constituents. And the idea that what may be true today will very likely change in the future, one way or the other. And it was the intention of the three of us to provide the Board a consideration of a resolution that was flexible, fluid, that did seek to protect the safety of everyone who wishes to come onto campus to participate in an instructional program at our facility. And, and that was first and foremost in mind as we began to take public comment as far back as September twentieth, when the topic was called health and safety. So with that, those minor clarifications as we look to now hear public comment from our constituents. So I'm just going to go in order of what I see out here, and I see Aaron Lucas. Go ahead. And we are going to implement a timer of three minutes for each of our public speakers. Hi, Aaron.
All right, let me know when, when we're starting and I'll.
Right now, you're on.
So for those of you that haven't been to these public comments before, I'm Aaron Lucas. I teach microbiology here at MJC for nursing majors, and I also have since before the pandemic taught a class on pandemics. Or before this pandemic, I've taught a class on pandemics, I should say. And I hold a PhD in microbiology and I focused on infectious disease while I was in graduate school. And as I have said before, in these public comments, there is overwhelming evidence that the COVID nineteen vaccines are excellent at protecting us from severe disease and death. Now, I currently am hearing that people say that, well, it doesn't protect us from infection, therefore they are no good. And let me tell you, in the whole history of vaccines on the planet, from seventeen hundreds to now, there has only ever been a single vaccine that has prevented infection. We measure vaccine efficacy based on keeping us from being ill and keeping us alive. So these vaccines are really good in that way. And I know that you are talking about testing. And if I can appeal to the Board for vaccine mandates for science, let me try and go that way for cost. The Board may not be aware, but last year, a colleague and I had come up with a testing protocol using a test that costs five dollars per test for anyone who was coming to campus. And we even negotiated with a distributor to get enough tests for all future use. And the district did not want to go forward with that plan because of costs. And now the current test that the district is using is about sixty dollars per test, which is obviously a lot more. And in the language of this resolution, it's now saying that we're going to test everyone regardless of vaccination status. And I know you kind of addressed that, but it really leaves a lot to be desired as far as cost. The district really drug their feet on those five dollar tests, and now we can no longer get that deal. That deal is gone. And now we seem to be dragging our feet on vaccination as well. To get enrollments back to where we need them financially to be solvent, we really do need to, to get this vaccine mandate up and going. That'll allow for the vast majority to not need testing at the college's expense. The vaccines are free. We've already paid for them with our taxes. The very small fraction of people that just don't want to take the vaccine, okay, fine, they can still get tested at a cost to the, to the college. And I can tell you, as an instructor who is teaching on campus right now, we need students to come into lab to learn these critical skills. I have students that have had all of their prerequisites as online labs, and that is not sufficient. There are, they are remedial in most ways. And so to get them back up to where they need to be, we need to be able to have our labs full. We need to be able to have students in there. And right now, without everybody being vaccinated, we can only have half the students in at a time, and that's not.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming to us to speak about this issue. Our, our next speaker will be Darren Haydock.
Members of the Board, Chancellor Young, and valued support staff making this meeting possible, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Darren Haydock, and I am a longtime resident of Turlock, a graduate of Modesto Junior College, and the parent of a current Modesto Junior College student. I am a third generation Valley resident. The district has indicated that it wants to resume normal in-person instruction as soon as safely possible. But passing this resolution will move that goal far into the distance. Without a vaccine requirement for in-person instruction, it will be impossible to return to anywhere near pre-COVID in-person instruction rates. That means the vast majority of MJC students will be deprived of in-person instruction for yet another semester. I have witnessed the negative impact of distance education firsthand as I have watched my daughter struggle to grasp difficult chemistry and math concepts from ten-minute videos and little meaningful contact from her instructors. And I would add, in, in response to the last speaker, I, I, I absolutely confirm the labs are hard. My daughter had no lab experience, and this time she's very green and is suffering because of it. I have also read MJC's own internally generated data that indicates that success in online courses is significantly less than success rates for face-to-face classes. And this was when online students chose to be online students. With this resolution, students will be continued to be forced into the left, less effective modality. This, the resolution before you indicates that the district values freedom of choice. But choice for whom and for what? What this resolution is saying is that choices for those who are capable and can afford to go elsewhere for their education. The CSU has live instruction because they have a vaccine requirement. The UC has live instruction because they have a vaccine requirement. Students who have the means to choose, have, to choose, have real choices. But for those for whom MJC and Columbia are the only option, and this was my situation thirty seven years ago, there is no choice. Board member Beggs said this morning in the Modesto B that the resolution represents a middle ground. But is this really the kind of compromise we want? If you choose this compromise, please understand that your choice will certainly mean more preventable deaths than our county. Stanislas County has the fifth highest rate of deaths per one hundred thousand residents of all fifty-eight California counties, due in part to the low fifty-four percent vaccination rate for eligible populations. The Modesto B indicated on October first that in Stanislas County, eighty-five percent of the COVID hospitalizations and ninety-three percent of deaths are of people not fully vaccinated. Please understand that the Board's choice to adopt this resolution means denying my daughter and others like her the choice to have a quality education. This choice means fewer vaccinated people in a county already struggling with lower vaccination rates. Quite simply, this choice means more people will die. I hope this is not a choice you are willing. Close this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Haydock, and, and especially a graduate yourself of MJC. Thank you for coming to speak to us. Appreciate it. Our next speaker. I just, I'm looking, hold on. Bill Anelli. Hi, Bill.
Hi, thank you for welcoming us here tonight. My name is Bill Anelli. I teach philosophy here at Modesto Junior College, as well as medical ethics as part of our respiratory program. By not requiring vaccine immunizations is, like Darren said, to invite more disease and death in our community and simply testing, testing and mask wearing. So you want to add to the resolution to require vaccine immunization. So it's deeply unethical, irresponsible, given that the vaccine is safe. So I urge you to vote no on this resolution and instead to direct the Chancellor to require a vaccine while with testing and mask wearing. Why? If you reject this, you're basically rejecting the consensus of the top experts from the fields of vaccinology, immunology and epidemiology. The current vaccine received full FDA approval on August twenty third, despite intense pressure to approve it earlier. The FDA stood firm until they had the science right. Let me be clear as well, MDs, RNs, public health officials, philosophers like myself, lawyers, talk show personalities, chiropractors, and even community college biology professors are not top experts on the science of the vaccine. Why? To be a top expert on the science of the vaccine, you're involved in primary research, peer review of publications in the field, and active engagement with the latest peer-reviewed literature. At community college level, what we are doing is being skilled at reading and teaching what the top experts say. So please, it's so crucial to always ask, what's the source of your information? Is it coming from the top experts who are in consensus on this? Now, I want to say a couple of things about the wherestes and, and the resolution of the, of this. The Board's desire is to allow freedom of choice in personal health decisions. It should be known that the US Constitution, for the nineteen oh five Jacobson versus Massachusetts ruling, personal health decisions are not absolute freedoms. The US Constitution gives the power to the states to restrict freedom of choice in making those decisions. So I think the resolution whereas should add that understanding. Also, there's a whereas about risk factors do vary by age and comorbidity as a whereas. Yes, they do. But what the whereas leaves out is a way to minimize those risks without any health downside. By the way, the chances of being hospitalized by the vaccine with Guillain-Barre is about one in a hundred and twenty thousand. One in a hundred and twenty thousand. The chances of, if you're not vaccinated, getting hospitalized with COVID is one in six. Let's do some serious smart risk assessment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anelli, for that information. Appreciate your willingness to come to the Board to speak. Now, our next speaker is Ruth Lumen. Greetings.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to come before the Board. My name is Ruth Lumen, and I teach at MJC. I will be reading a comment from Kyle Lumen, a former epidemiologist for Stanislas County and current physician at Kaiser Hospital, who cannot be here tonight because he is working with COVID patients. The following are his comments and concerns as a medical and public health professional regarding the Board resolution. The health risks for teaching at YCCD for the last eighteen months have essentially been zero. In-person classes reduced, and thus each individual managed their own risk privately. So the risk of contracting COVID nineteen while education occurred was nearly eliminated. The vaccine has now changed the risk of contracting COVID such that schools can now entertain the idea of opening more fully. Even if one is not going to get the vaccine, it is the vaccine itself that has created the opportunity to have more students on campus. On a personal level, getting these already proven efficacious vaccines is a selfish act. It keeps one safe from hospitalization or long-term health problems. At a community level, the vaccination lowers the risk of getting COVID for all, a measure for the benefit of an entire group. The risks of teaching and attending school, even with vaccines available, are not zero and depend almost entirely on the percentage of the population that has been vaccinated. Right now, for example, teachers in the Bay Area have a much lower risk of getting COVID than here because there are higher rates of vaccination than in the Central Valley. If YCCD is not going to require that all receive the vaccine, then it must implement testing and symptom management so that all are as safe as if everyone had the vaccine. If YCCD wants to have unvaccinated students attend in-person classes, this would require a tremendous number of tests and administrative work to verify which students should be on campus at which time. Is this feasible? Is this feasible for the college? The purpose of any plan to expand in-person education has to be how to reduce the health risks to all. Otherwise, there is potential for liability. Those who want to use politics, religion, or personal opinion to determine if they take the vaccine or not can, but those individual choices cannot enter into a plan to keep the entire community safe. Keeping the campus community as safe as possible is a public health issue, and as such, health and public health professionals should develop the plan. Leadership needs to follow the expert guidance of those professionals. This protocol must be very detailed and thought out ahead of time. Given the lack of specificity or clarity in the current resolution, it is neither clear that such consultation has been sought or that a feasible plan of testing can or will be implemented before spring semester. And that has produced warrant for concern. Thank you for your attention, and Kyle has also provided a draft protocol for testing and symptom management. If leadership is interested, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Ms. Lumen, and, and yes, I'm sure, certainly, I would say certainly pass along the information as all of it becomes part of the Board Minutes. Appreciate your willingness to come speak to the Board. Our next speaker is Mike Turok. Hi, Mike.
Hello. Greetings, Madam Chair and other esteemed Board members. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Mike Turok, and I teach biology at Columbia College. I have been teaching face-to-face classes here actually since the start of the pandemic without incident. As I read the proposed resolution, I realized the intense time and effort that must have gone into crafting it, and I applaud your efforts to find a measured response in the best interest of all parties, particularly our students. It has been said that the best definition of compromise is when all parties are equally unhappy. While I'm not sure that we have perfectly achieved that goal in this case, I do recognize that we are much closer to that ideal than we might otherwise have been. To this combination, I would like to add a few other items for your consideration. The resolution rightly acknowledges the fact that acquired immunity to COVID nineteen, whether artificially acquired through vaccination or naturally acquired through COVID recovery, does not prevent future transmission of disease. For this reason, vaccine mandates do not have the power to achieve the stated goal of preventing transmission. I applaud the Board for resisting the temptation to simply adopt a vaccine mandate that so many other colleges, corporations, and government entities have mindlessly instituted as a proposed solution to this problem. This resolution also acknowledges that individuals have many and varied reasons for foregoing vaccination against COVID nineteen. I myself have recovered naturally from COVID nineteen, much to the disappointment of some, and I now have naturally acquired immunity that should serve me well for some time. Therefore, I choose not to take this particular vaccine that does not offer much benefit to me to justify the associated risk of any adverse reactions. Fundamentally, the decision whether to be vaccinated against COVID nineteen or not is an individual one based on longstanding principle that each individual has the right to determine their own healthcare decisions based on their assessment of risks and benefits. Such rights should never be surrendered quickly nor regarded lightly. A growing body of evidence from around the world strongly suggests that the risks associated with COVID nineteen are not equally spread across the population. COVID nineteen can be a serious problem for those older individuals and those with one or more comorbidities. However, young and otherwise healthy individuals have less risk of serious complications from COVID. The associated risk from COVID infection declined even more with early intervention and multifaceted treatment options. Despite claims to the contrary, mounting data on adverse reactions to COVID nineteen mRNA vaccines indicates that they have a safety profile that is actually lower than traditional vaccines. No one knows the potential for long-term risks associated with messenger RNA vaccines because they have not been around long enough to develop a complete risk profile. Thank you again for your time and effort on this issue, and I yield back any remaining time.
Thank you, Mike, for coming to speak. I know you were here earlier at three o'clock to do the same and happy to, happy to see that you stuck around to give public comment. Appreciate it. Next up will be Dawn Messimer. Dawn, are you there? I'm gonna move, I can come back to Dawn. I'm gonna move then to Elizabeth McInnes.
Oh, shoot. Oh, I'm here.
Well, okay, okay, Dawn, let's, let's go ahead then. Dawn, go, go ahead. Welcome. Happy to have you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
For that delay. My name is Dawn Messimer. I'm a local ICU nurse at Doctor's Hospital. I work in one of three ICUs at the hospital. And I'm a graduate of MJC's nursing program. I would just like to talk briefly about my experience over the last year and a half with COVID that's through my own eyes and not in any way an exaggeration. I have seen hundreds of people die. And when it started, we were all hoping for a vaccine. And when it started, we were all hoping for a vaccine, and we got one, and it was wonderful. And the numbers went down. And over the last three to four months, the ICU filled up again. And I would say at least 90% of those people that have come in my ICU have been unvaccinated. And when they come in ICU, they get intubated and they die. That is something that people should know. It's not just old people. I've had people that are 20 years old. I've had people that don't have pre-existing conditions. I have people that look like me that are maybe 20 pounds overweight with esophageal reflux disease, heart indigestion, that die. So knowing and seeing people that are vaccinated now don't come in the ICU. We have had a handful. Every single one of those people that had a vaccine and died had immunosuppressive drugs, cancer, they had kidney transplants, they had issues that made the vaccine not work for them. So it is incredibly important that you have a vaccine mandate in your protocol. If you don't, you are gonna have people die. I have a coworker who got COVID. She and her husband were both in our hospital, and her husband died. So we were super, super excited and happy that we got a vaccine. And now we're all tired, we're frustrated. Many nurses, doctors, and ancillary staff have quit because they can't take it anymore. I cannot express to you how hard this is and how important it is that you have a vaccine mandate in this protocol. I have not had one person come in ICU and have an issue with taking a vaccine. So that is my message to the board and everybody out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And my goodness, to hear you talk about, you know, real boots on the ground, how moving your experience. And I'm sorry also for the loss that you witnessed and the loss of your friends. And thank you so much for your service. And when you say people get tired, I hope you don't get tired. We need you. We need you working at that.
Thank you very much. And when policies come out there that help us, we really appreciate it. When they don't, it's really hard.
Thank you for coming to speak. Very good. Moving on to Elizabeth McInnes. Welcome, Elizabeth.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Awesome. Thanks for having us to comment again tonight. I'm Elizabeth McInnes. I teach bio at MJC. I'd like to restate that according to experts working in the fields of epidemiology and virology and immunology, the best way to slow and decrease the spread of the virus, SARS-CoV-2, that causes the disease, COVID-19, is through vaccination, testing, and the use of masks. We need to hit this from different angles. The language of the currently proposed resolution does not reflect the importance of vaccination in a plan to reduce the spread of this virus, severe disease, and death in our community. It is important that vaccination be a requirement in our plans to get students back on campus to help us increase enrollment. And for us to finally, like, I really want to get in my lab safely. And I'll be honest, I'm in lab a little bit. I go in with six people. I don't want anybody who's not vaccinated to get sick or take that illness home to their families. So to do this, let's make sure that we have vaccination as a requirement. I also want to mention tonight, testing fully vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals on the same schedule is not a responsible use of our resources. Testing fully vaccinated every two weeks is the protocol at most UC institutions. Testing the unvaccinated would need to be more often to be effective. Probably twice a week at a minimum, an antigen test would be great for that particular protocol. Antigen tests will show if a person is currently shedding virus on the day of the test. I also want to say that unvaccinated individuals that have recovered from SARS-CoV-2 infection do not have the same responses as those who are vaccinated. Plus, if you have gotten over SARS-CoV-2 infection and survived, and you get a vaccination, you're gonna have even better protection. That's shown in the data. The science of the current platforms goes back decades and has been proven to be safe. We just had, this is the largest testing group in history on a vaccine, and people are doing well. Let's include vaccination in our plan, and I hope you guys have a great evening, and thank you for listening to my comments tonight.
Elizabeth, thank you so much and for coming to speak each time. We really appreciate your willingness to come again to speak to the board.
Sure, absolutely. And if anybody has questions, let me know.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eileen Kerr. Welcome, Eileen.
Hi. Sorry, I had my sound on in the wrong way. Thank you very much for giving me a chance to talk. Others have spoken about the scientific issues with regard to, including a vaccine mandate in this resolution. I would like to address a little bit more the fiscal responsibility of the board with regard to this mandate. I am, my name is Eileen Kerr, and I'm a history instructor at MJC, and I'm also the parent of an MJC student. I'm asking the board to vote no on this resolution as it will fiscally damage our institution by spending money on tests that won't result in more students on campus and will actually drive students like my daughter towards campuses where live instruction is possible. As I'm sure you are all aware, our district is operating under the Guidelines for Higher Education, which requires that mixed vaccinated and unvaccinated adults must engage in masking and social distancing of six feet in order to protect those who are unvaccinated. That is the protocol we are obliged to go by. The resolution institutes a mandated testing requirement of all those coming on either campus, but this doesn't eliminate the six-foot social distance requirement and thus will not change anything at all in terms of reopening campus. If we are social distancing, we will simply not be able to bring 40% of our classes back to live. To illustrate, here's what's happening in my division and to me. I work in the Behavioral and Social Sciences Division, which you all likely know is the highest producer of FTEs in this district. Our classes make up about 28% of the classes taught on campus, and we teach to pretty much every student because we teach GE-required courses. Our courses are generally 40 students or more in our classes at MJC. Right now, because of the distance requirements, no classes are meeting live in our division. None. Because distancing would limit our class size to eight in Founder's Hall and other buildings. That is fiscally impossible to do. So I teach all my classes remotely or online. In spring, were this mandate for testing to be your only mechanism to open, there would be almost no classes for students to come back to, so we wouldn't get back to normal. The required social distancing will not go away simply because you are deciding that you're gonna test people. In the spring, I will be teaching all of my five classes that I desperately wanted to teach live with my students, online or on Zoom. And my students, who are desperate to be in classes, who tell me in my remote classes that they want to be live and are frustrated and angry, are not gonna be able to come back. A vaccine mandate would fix that, and I urge you to put a vaccine mandate into this resolution. Thank you.
Eileen, thank you for coming to speak to the board and the work that you do at MJC. Thank you so much. Next speaker is Rosalinda Viera.
Hi. Can't turn off my video, but it's okay. Hopefully you can hear me. Okay, my name is Rosalinda. I'm an MJC classified staff. I've worked at MJC since 2013, and I'm currently housed in the SSP and Ag Division. So I flip back and forth between the two. Both areas have been open, actually Ag never really closed. SSP, the Student Services Building on MJC, opened back in August. I was an MJC student myself, and I also have one MJC student currently now scheduled to graduate, hopefully in the spring. My middle, a couple of my concerns, I guess, with the policy, because I understand people's personal decision, although I do think vaccines help, but I know it's not for everyone. I totally understand that. My daughter had COVID twice this, yeah, this year. Second time she was in the hospital. She finally was able to get past the personal immunization and finally got vaccinated. She hasn't had it again. She works with second graders, so they're not able to, anyone can get vaccinated. So she's at a higher risk. They don't wash their hands as much as adults either. But my biggest concern is the current policy that you guys have doesn't address non-students or those coming on campus. Because in SSP, we're dealing with financial aid, we're dealing with applications, we're dealing with community classes, we're dealing with all of the counseling, those who don't even know if they want to come to school. And they're coming in sick. I will be honest, they've come in coughing, some have said, oh, I should be vaccinated or quarantined for another two days. And I'm just going, why are you here? Why are you coughing on me? Why are you sneezing on me? That doesn't address the community because we are open to the community. And I think that's my biggest concern is my own safety because I am on campus. Like I said, I'm in there face-to-face. There's no barriers other than our mask to protect us from the ones that are coming in that may not even realize they have it. And I have, you know, immunocompromised mother and a child as well who has kidney disease. And so that kind of worries me. And so I just want to bring that to your attention, that it doesn't address those kind of issues. Okay? And that's my biggest concern, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to all of us and all our personal views. And I guess that's my biggest concern, those of us that are working with the non-students that are coming in and trying to get them registered and get them into classes and get their financial aid taken care of so that way they can be students. So thank you again, and I could be, hope you guys have a great day. Sorry you have to listen to all this.
Oh, no, we appreciate it. Rosalinda, thank you for that perspective. The board appreciates your willingness to come forward. Our next speaker is Stella Baratlas.
Hi there, thank you so much for having me. My name is Stella Baratlas, and I'm a librarian at Medesto Junior College. I'm also the library's liaison to our Nursing and Allied Health Division. I have a master's in Library and Information Science, and I have created and I continue to update research guides for the MJC community on pandemics and COVID-19. And I have, as a librarian, been kind of steeped in lots of misinformation around the pandemic. I've also been immersed in the scientific community's conclusions about what works when you are faced with a public health crisis. And I want to say that I am opposed to this resolution on the basis of several factors. Number one, there are several elements in this resolution that that appear to be, sorry about that big camera, several elements in this resolution that appear to be misinformation adjacent, let's call it. Number one is the mention of natural, the allusion to natural immunity in the second therefore clause. And also the appearance of the Freedom of Choice Clause. I feel that that is a false proposition. People, even with a vaccine mandate, would have choice. They could, they have medical and religious exemptions. The other basis for my opposition to this is that the, there is no mention in the resolution about race and socioeconomic standing. In the wherefore clause, it mentions age and comorbidities, but it fails to mention these other factors. And I think that it's important to mention it because our Latino, Latina, and Latinx community has been the most impacted by COVID-19 in our county anyway. So I think it's important to acknowledge that. And finally, I oppose this resolution on the basis that I work in a public space in the library, like the speaker before me. I'm in a space where people are coming in, students, faculty, sometimes people from the community, and we are not checking people's credentials to see what their status is. And I don't feel protected by this resolution. I don't think students and community members in the library are protected as well. I've been waiting for a vaccine mandate. As the mom of a cancer survivor with a compromised pulmonary function and who is also an MJC student that's been waiting to come back to campus, I oppose this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to come share that with us. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Dr. Brennan.
Hello, my name is Jessica Brennan, and I am full-time faculty in Child Development. I want to say that I agree with a lot of the discussions that's been going on here. But rather than reiterate each of those points, what I want to point out to you is something that uniquely affects us in the Child Development Department, and that's having tiny humans on campus. So our Child Development Department has two in-person, or two lab practitioners, both toddlers and preschool age. And as we're looking at the new vaccines, even the ones that are coming out, those children will not be able to be vaccinated. Therefore, it is important that the adults that surround them have been vaccinated or are free of COVID-19 with regular testing. So I point to you, or I point out to you that we know that the Child Development Department CTE program is helping to put childcare workers into, childcare professionals into our county and our community. But we also know that there are some students who rely upon having their, having their children in daycare. That, that's the best, I'm sorry. That little giggle right there, that's what we want to hear on campus? I don't think that, that wasn't planned. I don't. So much. Think about the tiny humans that we have on our campus and how important it is. This resolution. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for that background noise, too. That's delightful. Thank you for coming to speak to the board. Our next speaker is Susan Kerr. Are you there, Susan?
I am. I tried to juggle a bunch of screens here.
You're welcome.
Hi, thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak. As you might tell from my last name, there's a few Kers at MJC. I am Susan Kerr. I teach in anthropology. I attended MJC. I'm a second-generation faculty member as my father also taught at MJC, Robert Kerr, and I am a parent of a student at MJC currently. Since reading the resolution, I've been imagining life under a testing mandate. So join me in my ideation. I would like for us to imagine a day in the life of MJC or Columbia under a testing program as described in the resolution. Testing at some unknown, ideally reasonable frequency, which gives you a result a couple of days later. How will that result be provided? Would that be like an app or a printout? Once you have that, a student or faculty member or staff member then needs to show confirmation of this test result to enter the building and be on campus. Where will this happen? Will we have monitors at every door to every building? How many staff will be needed to do this? And in a timeframe between classes, if you have people on campus, it's 10 minutes between classes. As a friend noted also, when we were considering how confirmation might be shown, like, is it through an app? I mean, how long is it gonna take for a fake screenshot of a negative task to pop up at the door, given you only have a few moments to get from one building to another? Right? This is obviously not even thinking about the whole problem of we can't even have classes on campus if there's a six-foot rule, right? I'm just imagining if we could somehow get people on campus. Right? I'm just imagining if we could somehow get people on campus. And I'm sure I've not even thought of all the possible issues and costs that may not have yet been considered. So I hope that these things will be considered. Alternatively, let's not imagine in how access to campus would work under a vaccine mandate and how it does work at many other campuses. A student, faculty or staff member submits their vaccination status, shows up in, for work or enrolls in a class. This is how we get to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, for your willingness to come forward to speak to the board. Our next speaker is Aisha Saleh. Welcome, Aisha.
Hello, thank you. Um, thanks for having me today. I had some comments as a part of my report, but since things have switched orders, I want to make sure that I get to say this before you guys go on to discuss this resolution. As the representative tasked with providing the board and chancellor with a statement on behalf of the faculty at MJC, I would like to request that the board consider delaying the vote on the resolution that addresses COVID-19 testing and for the board's ad hoc committee to be continued and to have a discussion with constituency representatives from both campuses. I know how much the board values the input of faculty and its other constituent groups. And faculty have expressed immense interest in this board item as MJC is planning to move to 40% of our classes being face to face this spring. And this resolution will impact the feasibility and safety of that plan. And of course, all the faculty who've come and spoken in the comments have made it clear that there's an amount, immense amount of interest, particularly in the possibility of a vaccine mandate. At the request of faculty who contacted me regarding the considerable changes to this resolution since it was discussed at the special board meeting last month, I have agendized a discussion of the board resolution for our senate meeting this Thursday. And I would really like the opportunity as a faculty leader to get that feedback from my own constituency and be able to provide it to the board to best represent their stance. Uh, so that's my spiel as MJC's academic senate president. As a faculty member at MJC, I'm also concerned about the financial responsibility that a resolution like this needs to consider. This would have an immense amount of expense and perhaps not any of the benefit. A lot of campuses do have testing requirements like this where vaccinated individuals are tested at a less regular frequency and unvaccinated individuals are tested more frequently like at UC Davis. But those campuses also have a vaccine mandate in place, which make that testing financially possible at those campuses. So that's my primary concern with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Aisha, for coming to speak and share that information with the board. Appreciate it. Any other individuals who wish to speak before the board has its discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. Um, and as of, of course, with public comment, the board, the board can't respond to each public comment. But now the board does get a chance to discuss this resolution that, before them. So we opened up the discussion with board members about the resolution before us, considering all the public comment that we received to date. I don't see the cameras on. I just need a Nancy Hinton. Oh, there Darren, there you are. Darren, is Nancy can? Nancy there? Yeah, there you are. Okay, very good. Do I see a one, two, three? Okay, very good. Okay.
And trustee as well.
I'm sorry. Well, oh, and the student trustee as well. I need your camera on. Let's see. There you are. Okay, great. So now's an opportunity for the board to have its discussion regarding this resolution. Would like to comment. Go ahead. I see the Nancy, Nancy Hinton. Go ahead, trustee Hinton. You're muted. Just unmute yourself.
There we go. Sorry about that. Um, if he's, if he's willing to and if he's, if he's had any interaction with his fellow students. We've heard from staff, we've heard from the community, I'd like to hear from the students.
From our trustee, from our student trustee.
Yes, if he's had any interaction with the fellow students.
Go ahead. You have to unmute yourself.
Yes. It's been, um, pretty difficult getting a true consensus of our, of how the students have been feeling. The main, the main thing that I've received from the students is just this feeling of wanting to get back to normalcy. Now, in regards to mandates, I've, I, I don't, I don't know how much this is going to, you know, help as far as getting an opinion goes. But I, there's been, um, from both sides, I've heard, um, a lot of opinion. Um, I've had students that completely, uh, they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't like the mandate, but then I've had students that they, they agree with the mandate, um, which kind of I've, I've had from both sides. I know, um, even from staff that I've encountered, um, it's been a little bit of both worlds. So we've had a lot of discussion, uh, within the government, uh, student government regarding it. I, I do know that, um, the main, the main theme that the students have expressed is safety. They, what, what, whatever that decision may be, they, they just, their concern is safety. So I, yeah, that's, it's, it's, this is a difficult topic to get a clear picture of what they would like. But that's what I've heard from students.
Thank you, Aisha. Appreciate your, your student perspective. Trustee Nicolau.
Thank you, Chair Vulcan. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank you and trustee Begg's and trustee Garrett for working together to put together this resolution. I wish COVID wasn't the reality. I wish we didn't have to have a special task force and I wish we were talking about different things. But what I can say beyond that is I really respect the time and the compromise that has gone into this resolution we're looking at today. I think, uh, my Torax comments were perfect because I think nobody's a winner in this resolution, but nobody's a loser. And what I appreciate about it is it takes this conversation away from vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And to me, this is a conversation we need to be having about the health and safety of all. And it looks at testing equally. I absolutely appreciate the professional opinions today. I re, I appreciate, um, the, the degrees that have come forward and the personal experiences. I would not vote in favor of a mandatory vaccination. And I'll just say that publicly, I'll say that to my fellow trustees. I will not make that decision for someone else. That is not my role on this board. I will however, support the health and safety for everyone. And for that, I want to say that I appreciate the way this is written. I appreciate that it puts our chancellor in a position to be flexible with the needs of today and the unknown needs of tomorrow.
Thank, thank you, trustee Nicolau. I had a question for Henry. I don't mean to, for our chancellor, I don't mean to put you on the spot from, uh, Aisha Saleh in asking for more time. Is there a concern or, well, I don't want to say concern because, um, is there a, what, what, how does, how does a postponement of, of this resolution to the next meeting affect second semester? I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, the, the request I heard tonight and apply it in real time. So Henry, I, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but, um, I did hear that, you know, listening to all the public comment, uh, uh, you know, a delay to work out some of the language.
We will work with whatever decision the board makes. And if there is a delay, we will still make it work. But please understand that a delay would mean pushing against the time to the commencement of the spring semester in terms of, uh, you know, classes, assigning of, uh, rooms and labs and personnel returning. And then people may also need to think of other issues that we might have not thought about tonight. And that is pertaining to childcare if, uh, you know, they're back on campus. All of those would have to be considered. But I would say that a one-month delay would still be workable. It would just make it a little bit more challenging.
Okay, and I see trustee Richards raises hand, but I still have a, a thought is that, um, it had, it, should the board entertain a delay or not? The language of the resolution provides enough opportunity for the board to be flexible in modifying the resolution into the future. So a delay would not prevent, I mean, a, a vote not to delay wouldn't prevent the board from considering a, a, something else in the future. I mean, I'm putting, I, I don't, I mean, I don't mean to put, you know, the board on the spot on that, but I'm just, I'm just trying to justify in my mind the sincere request to consider working with constituent groups on how this would work out. And on the other hand, please indulge me just for a second. By directing the chancellor to work those out, we're going to learn a lot. Um, and a lot of that learning will more than likely come back to the board to, to, to adjust and perfect its direction. I mean, I'm just sort of brainstorming in my mind so that we can get something rolling. But I, I just, I want to acknowledge that I appreciate, and I think the whole board does, appreciate the, the willingness of the constituents to help make this work in some way. And I recognize that Aisha asked for a delay to do that, but on the other hand, you know, I'm, I'm sort of in the middle. I think we can do that at any time. Um, I'm going to go in order of hands raised. Milton Richards, you add your hand up.
Well, I think this is a really, really difficult decision. I think that we as trustees have an obligation to, to make our campus safe. I appreciate all the emails and phone calls I've gotten. It's been very professional. I think the national debate has been far less civil than ours has. I think what, what you all have done in this resolution is to try to make a very difficult situation better. I don't really see a need to delay because I don't know that there's anything new that's going to come out. We've had open heat hearings, we've had tonight, we've had phone calls. And I think this resolution, uh, I, I was concerned about the resolution as far as the specifics of testing and how that was going to work. But after, after talking to, to you, Marjorie, um, I, I believe that these are, the mechanics of this, we can leave to the chancellor and, and our campus leadership team. And I would support this resolution.
Thank you, trustee Richards. Trustee Begg's. You're muted.
I just wanted to address a couple of the points that brought up and, and one was about students. And according to the Medesto B, they said half of the students surveyed by MJC in mid-September said they would like a vaccine mandate. But then it says 63% of students indicated they preferred a testing mandate. So I'm, I'm having some math issues there with that. And then further down in this article, it says 40% of students said they may leave the college if it's under a vaccine mandate. So, um, I, I think that perhaps we have not taken into consideration enough how students feel. And then I, I don't think a vaccine is a magic pill. I think it's great for all the reasons that people have said it is as far as lower symptoms, et cetera. But I'm looking at a UC Davis study from this month that is saying that there's no significant difference in viral load between vaccinated and unvaccinated people. And that, um, they also found no significant difference in viral load between infected people with or without symptoms. So we're not dealing with a simple solution here at all. And the idea that we won't have to test people, that's going to depend on variants. And that's why we built flexibility into this because there may be a variant down the road that people who are vaccinated are totally resistant to and they don't need to be tested. And there may be one that shows up that, um, everybody is vulnerable to. And we do need to test everybody and we may need to test people at different intervals. So that's why we built in the flexibility so that we wouldn't back ourselves into a corner and we could react to the virology on the ground locally, so to speak. So I recognize that this is a solution that nobody's going to be happy with. The only other thing that I, I, that puzzles me is I don't understand why people who have been vaccinated are expressing such fear about the unvaccinated. It, because if you don't think the vaccine is protecting you, I don't know how you think it will protect you from other people who have the vaccine. I mean, I think this is just complex and complicated. And there's stuff we don't know now that we'll know in the future. There's stuff we think we know now that will turn out to be wrong. It is, it is very difficult and I think that this is the best compromise we're going to come up with right now. And we can reevaluate it and we are empowering people to be responsive to what's going on in the moment. And I think that's really the most important thing we can do.
Thank you, trustee Begg. Before I go to Jenny Nicolau. Leslie, you know, uh, the, the draft that you and trustee Garrett and I looked at and the words punitive, did you have a comment about that as well?
Yes, yes. What I was saying about that is when, when we mentioned punitive, we were talking about, we're not going to test people just to be oppressive and try to force them to get a vaccination. We're going to test according to what improves safety, period. So I, and I was not saying that we weren't going to have some mechanism to enforce our, our testing rules, whatever they are. I was just saying that we're not going to harass people. And, you know, more and more studies are coming out about people with natural immunity. But, but we're all individuals and all of us are affected differently and we have to make our own decisions. And, and I also don't want us to be in the business of mandating boosters and how soon you have to have a booster. And, you know, I mean, this, this could get endlessly more difficult. So the, those are my thoughts now. They're subject to change depending on what we learn.
But, but in, in writing the draft, would you, would you agree that, that the word punitive could potentially be dropped?
Yeah, we can take it out or because it's referring to the intervals of testing. It's not referring to.
But it can be.
Sure, we can take it. I'm fine with taking it out. I think it's clear to the chancellor what we meant by it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for your comments. Trustee Nicolau.
I move to approve motion or YCCD Resolution 21 dash 22 dot O7, removing the word punitive.
Um, thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure I got all of the trustees' comments. So, uh, trustee Garrett?
Well, again, I want to recognize everyone that spoke, all of their input and, and the time they, they took, uh, to, to speak before the board on this very important topic, as we all know. When I sat with, uh, trustee Vulcan and trustee Begg's in, in drafting uh, this resolution before you tonight, it was critical for me that we focus on, uh, a resolution that was very specific to public health policy and to the safety of our college community and to the community at large. We want to incentivize people to, to, to take the vaccine. Um, I do not agree and I made it clear. I do not agree, and I made it clear when we, when we were putting this together, testing of those who have been vaccinated. Because to me, that, that is de-incentivizing people to, to, to get vaccinated. And when you talk about a, 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 a policy that does that, I think the, the one before us tonight does that. That says as well as those who have been vaccinated. So you're going to, you're basically telling people, you know, here I went and got the vaccine for not only my safety, but others, my family members, et cetera. And yet I'm going to be under the same testing requirements as everybody else because we're trying to thread that fine needle. I also disagree with getting into the debate because I'm not an expert. I don't hold a PhD in any discipline, particularly the area of virology and the science that went behind the COVID vaccine, et cetera. And the issue of talking about possible benefits and possible side effects. I think, as again, when we were drafting this, I recommended that language like that be removed. So if that stays in tonight, I, I cannot support the resolution as it, as it stands before us tonight in its current form.
I'm sorry, will you repeat which, if which part stays in?
I'm talking about where we're getting into the, the scientific debate in the second to last paragraph about the COVID vaccine and the issue of, you know, as well as those who have been vaccinated. I do not think that we should be, we should stay focused. And I said this when we were drafting this, as you, as you recall Chair Balkan, that we stay focused on public health policy as it relates to our community college internal constituents, as well as the community at large. I still have concerns, and I made this very clear. I still have concerns about asymptomatic students carrying a virus back to our vulnerable population in our community college district. As we all know, one of the speakers spoke to that. And I have felt that way for a long time. So I want to make sure that we stick to public health policy as it relates to our district. And I want to make sure that we incentivize people to, to get the vaccine, not de-incentivizing people. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Garrett. But I do want to be clear, and I'm sorry, Graciela, will you put that up again? Because you, you've gone to great effort to make this comment. And I want to make sure I know what you're referring to. So when we look at this, this paragraph, which line, Trustee Garrett, are you referring to?
Well, I, I specifically want to go to first and foremost, the second to last paragraph where it's bold and where it says now therefore be it resolved. And when we get into the, the bottom part of it where it talks about benefits, but then it talks about possible side effects. For me, I have a problem with that. You know, right now, I mean, any vaccine that, that, that you take, I don't care what it is. Everyone is going to have varying reactions. But specific side effects? I don't think anyone that I'm aware of has published absolute specific. Could that change? Absolutely, it could change. But, but for us to be, to be saying, you know, we want to, again, I want to incentivize people to get the vaccine as a personal choice, but I want to incentivize that process. I think, again, we should stick to public health policy as it relates to our situation at the, at, at the Yosemite Community College District and not get into this, this, this quote unquote political debate and try to thread this fine needle in regards to that. I think the resolution as a whole takes into account people that, that, that are willing to get vaccinated and those that are not. But I may point out something that some of the speakers pointed out. If we, if we add in the issue of testing the vaccinated, that's going to double our expense from what was originally proposed to us by our finance department. So people need to keep that in mind. That, that we would be looking at a huge expense for this district, even in the period of time that this resolution is in effect.
Thank you. And so we've, we have a draft up here that highlights possible side effects and has it crossed out. And as I've indicated in my opening comments, it would be up to the chancellor to devise a schedule for these two different groups, which could mean that vaccinated are on a far different testing schedule. I mean, could mean. Again, I want to caution myself and the board members not to micromanage what we've asked the chancellor to carry out with his advisors. Let's keep going to the board members for comment. Trustee Hinton.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. One is I disagree with my fellow trustee that I usually agree with, Trustee Garrett. And that is that I feel that the resolution requiring everyone to be tested, at least in the beginning, is imperative because there is cross through. There is proof that people that have been vaccinating are carriers of the disease. And I think it's important to set that aside at the beginning. They may be asymptomatic, they may be because they're not real sick, but they could still be carrying it. And I think that needs to be established from the get-go. I don't feel that once that is established at the beginning, that it needs to be done, you know, twice a week or even once a week for those that are vaccinated. I know some campuses are doing it every two weeks or every three weeks. I'm not for a vaccine mandate at this time. But I do want to keep our people safe. And there are, it's not a matter of getting the test results back in two days. You can get the results back with, within an hour of the vaccine and a lot, or the test. And there are testing sites all over Stanislaus County that would not require us as a campus to cover a huge cost on it. We could do some here, but they could also go to private places that are doing them for free. So I just feel at this time, I wouldn't be opposed to putting it off a month before we make a definite decision. But I do feel that at the beginning, everyone needs to be tested. And then we test those that are not vaccinated more often. I mean, I chose to be vaccinated, but it was a personal choice. And it was a choice I made because of health issues that I have. But it was just that, it was my choice. And that's what I feel we need to do.
Thank you, Trustee Hinton. Before I go to Beggs, I wanted to ask Trustee Aguilar if he had a comment he wished to make.
Yeah, you know, I, I agree with the Trustee Garrett about, you know, incentivizing people. And also with the, the comments about the paragraph. But if we can move or scratch that paragraph, maybe we can move this along and get something started. And then, like you said, we could always pivot later on and, and just get this to a vote.
Thank you. And, and just before I go to Beggs, I wanted to make sure everyone realizes that this is a direction to the chancellor. The board is not giving direction on the frequency. We're leaving that to the chancellor. So, and his advisor. So I just want to make sure we don't leave here with a frequency in our mind because we're leaving that to the chancellor. Even though, feel free to express your opinion. I don't want to, but I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on in terms of that direction. Trustee Beggs.
I wanted to point out that the fourth whereas says, whereas the colleges have regularly communicated the benefits of vaccination and offer vaccines on campuses at no charge. We already do that. I'm okay with taking out the possible side effects line because when you get a vaccine, they give you a long list of possible side effects. And you can enroll in the VAERS program, et cetera. So you will get that if you choose to get a vaccine. At the same time, I am not in favor at all of tying the chancellor or his designees' hands on who is tested and how often. Because as Marjorie said, we are delegating that to them, and it will change. So I, I feel that because right now we have a lot of breakthrough infections, it may make sense to test the vaccinated at some interval, which I'm not going to determine. And there may be a variant in the future in which it does not make sense. We may not need to test anybody because COVID may, you know, go dormant for a while. We have no idea what the future holds. So that's why I think it's important that we pass this now and that we let the testing program be worked out and that it be allowed to change according to the circumstances. And then I'm also very glad that it's sunsetted and that we will be reevaluating in March. And of course, you know, if something comes up, we can get to it sooner. But I think the flexibility is very important.
Thank, thank you. Trustee Nicolau, are you willing to amend your motion based on the changes we've made?
What, one other thing, I see.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Booster recommendations as well as current illness rates. And I think, you know, those things are just available on the Stanislaus County website. I don't see any problem in letting people see what's going on locally.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's, that's not something we control.
Right, right. It's just if we have a website and we're telling students, I don't, I mean, I, it's fine to take out possible side effects. I didn't realize you were taking out the whole sentence, the whole rest of the sentence.
I would like to take out the word benefits and just end it at updating, updates from national and regional public health authorities about COVID-19 vaccines.
Perfect, okay.
And then I would be happy to amend my motion.
Amend your motion as it reads on the screen. Is that what your, your motion is?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Leslie. Board, board discussion.
There, there was two raised hands. I didn't know if you wanted to take those.
Yeah, board, board discussion. Go ahead.
Call the question.
No, I have board discussion from, I see a hand raised. Go ahead. Darren Garrett.
Well, if, if we're truly letting the, the chancellor decide who's to be tested and the frequency of that testing. And as previously mentioned, we want input from our constituency groups as part of that, that process. Then the, the paragraph says the Y, the board of the YCC directs the chancellor. So we could modify it and say that, that, the, the, in some fashion, to say that, that we're directing the chancellor to come up with a testing regime based upon input from, from experts, known science and, and input of, of constituency groups. That could be some language like that. If that's truly what we're trying to, to aim at and derive from this resolution.
Do you think that that's satisfied, though, with Rex, the chancellor is designated to take actions necessary to develop and implement that? And based on this discussion that, that is in the, that is memorialized tonight, do you think that that's already understood? And considering the way in which our chancellor seeks input all the time? Or are you, are you?
I'm just concerned about that line, de-incentivizing people and the extreme cost that if that's the road we go down, the extreme cost that's going to be associated with that. And when I mean extreme cost, it's, it's in, in the, you know, you're going to be looking at overall, in my estimation, you're going to be looking at close to over a million dollars to, to achieve that goal in, just in one semester.
But just to make sure again, Trustee Garrett, I understand which part of the sentence you want to change. Could you, could you identify where it is in this paragraph again that you'd like?
Well, I under, I understand what the, what the aim is. But if we're truly looking at empowering the chancellor and his team based upon public health policy, experts in the field, et cetera, as far as the testing that we're going to undergo. I mean, I, I fully agree with testing the unvaccinated. But I just have a problem with de-incentivizing people to get the vaccine.
Right, right. So is there a recommendation that you're making to change this sentence?
That's my, that's my position. That's where I, that's where I stand. How, how do we get there?
Okay, unless there's a, well, okay, we have a motion and a second. Unless there's a willingness to go back and amend the motion, Jenny Nicolau, I bounce it back to you. Is there an interest in, in amending the motion to be more clear in that last paragraph?
Nope, I'd like to hold my motion as is.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second on the floor. Now we'll go to roll call vote.
What happened?
Sorry, we were muted on this one. Roll call vote. Vice Chair Garrett?
No.
Trustee Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton? You're muted.
Yes.
Yeah. And Trustee Avila?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Board Chair Balkan?
I'm going to go with a no. I know that may be a surprise, but I'm going to go with a no.
It's five four to against. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for your work on this and the discussion. And now the, the, the chancellor has direction on how to proceed with this resolution. Moving on to, to go back to my agenda. Moving on to five point one, Board Finance Committee.
Well, as, as it will come, as a great disappointment to many, the Board Finance Committee did not meet. So there will be no exciting report out. The next meeting of the Finance Committee is November 1st. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Garrett, for that efficient report. Moving on to five point two, Board Policy Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met for the first time since May, so it was very interesting, exciting times. And I want to say a special thank you to the area experts and the IT department that helped us maintain on Zoom, along with our direction with Kimberly Gibbs and Graciela. And of course, we had Trustee Beggs and our newest trustee who has joined, the Policy and Procedure, Trustee Nicolau. We went through several of the policies, which we will get a report from Kimberly later. But I'd also like to thank those that showed up. Also Alan McKissick, who has been faithful to the Policy Procedures Committee for many years. And that's going to be the end of my report because Kimberly will give the report later in the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to reports and information items. Starting off first with presentation on redistricting. But did I, did I skip something, Graciela? Starting off first with presentation on, on redistricting, but did I, did I skip something, Garcia Ella?
No, you're, you're.
I'm in order. Okay, okay. So I had to move my papers around. Very good. So I wanted to welcome. Our speakers tonight and thank them. For uh, waiting so long um, uh, for their moment. Before us and really um, acknowledge that the redistricting conversation. Is a very important conversation that will last a couple meetings. And it begins first with this presentation by Bryn Hammerberg and Kay Montplaisir. And um, who will uh, launch the discussion about redistricting. And I wanted to welcome them. I see Bryn on the screen. Welcome. And. Your.
Kay unfortunately had to step out.
Okay, okay. Thank you for hanging in there with us, Bryn.
No problem.
So uh, I know that I wanted to warn everyone, this is a, the, not warn, but just prepare you that, I mean, we're, we're allotting about fifteen to twenty minutes for this presentation. It's going to take that long to really digest the important information that we need to understand. As it relates to redistricting. Um, which, which should be of great importance to our voters. And um, that, so I give the floor to you, Bryn.
Great.
Do you want me to share my screen or would you, would you be doing so?
I can share my screen if, if it cooperates with me.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
Great, okay. Um, so this is a presentation on the Yosemite Community College District. Uh, redistricting for this cycle. Um, well, first I just want to introduce myself. My name's Bryn Hammerberg. I'm a redistricting manager here at Redistricting Partners. Uh, I'm one of probably a couple people, including um, Kay Mont pleasure who. Uh, had to step out but was on the call. Um, and among other uh, people who work at Redistricting Partners, who will be. Involved in this process and drawing the lines and advising um, you all. So Redistricting Partners is a firm that's focused on redistricting demographics and Voting Rights Act analysis. We work under a master agreement with the Foundation for California Community Colleges to provide uh. Services directly to districts and have done more of this work with community colleges than any other firm. Uh, similar in partnership, in our partnership with the California School Boards Association for 2021. Um, and as I'm going through this presentation, if I'm speaking too quickly or if you have any questions, please stop me. Um, it's sometimes hard to know what is, what people don't know about if, um, because I'm pretty engaged in this. Um. So what is redistricting? Uh, it's the process that. In which we adjust district lines every ten years after the release of the US Census. Um, it's most well known in readjusting congressional and legislative lines. Um, but in California that uh, and many other places involves more local jurisdictions as well. And the census is the most important part of this. It's why we're doing this um, process later than usual. The census was released later um, because we had to wait for it to finish its count of. Um, the population, which is the main focus of redistricting. Uh, reallocating population to create. Uh, mostly equal districts in population. Um, redistricting, while it may be something that we only talk about once every ten years or. Most people only talk about once every ten years, it has become extremely politicized. Uh, and is the subject of more high profile Supreme Court decisions than any other part of our election system. So it's a very important process. Uh, so there's a number of important criteria that have been used nationally and are, have been upheld by courts. This is a ranked list according uh, to the Fair Maps Act. So, and I'll go through each of these and then zoom in on uh, communities of interest. Um, in later slides. So the first, and again, the most um. Important and the reason why we do redistricting is. Districts of relatively equal size. Um. First off, we are talking about people, not citizens. There wasn't a citizen question. Uh, citizenship question on the 2020 census. Um, and we adjust district sizes based on the total population. Uh, for a local government, this is usually within ten percent deviation. Um, and I'll talk about deviation, especially in regards to uh, YCCD um, current lines later on, but. Uh, we study deviation as the. Distance between the largest and the smallest district population. Um, so if you have a district that's twenty people. Over and another, that deviation is thirty people. Um, so most courts have allowed deviations to remain within ten percent. Congressional districts have a deviation of only one person, um, which is much more difficult to maintain. Um, districts also, uh, another uh, criteria is contiguity. This is a word that maybe is only used in redistricting um, once every ten years, but. Districts being contiguous means that you have one whole district. You can't. Hop over into it, uh, over one district into another part of it. Um, so that's a kind of literal definition of contiguity, one whole piece. And another way to describe it is functionally contiguous. So you may have a district. Um, that looks as to be one whole piece, but. You typically, one of the criteria we consider is keep making sure that. Residents of that district can travel from one part to another. Um, so if there's no roads, if there's a mountain that blocks it. Um, for example, then that may not be functionally contiguous, um, although it may be literally. We also focus on compactness. Um, so there's a fairly simple definition of this in California, um, which is. You shouldn't bypass nearby populated areas in favor of more distant populated areas. Um, that is unless there's a reason you do so, such as communities of interest. Um, or existing municipal lines, something like that. But um, compactness, you can also just look at it and. If you recognize it as a shape that you know, that is probably more compact than. A, a longer line or a more abstract shape. Um, the next uh, factor that we talk about a lot in redistricting that may not be discussed that much outside of it is this. Communities of interest. Um, which have a couple important factors to it. Um, but for, again, from the Fair Maps Act, uh, to the extent practicable. The geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest. Should be respected um, in a manner that minimizes its division. Um, and there are many definitions of what a community of interest is. Uh, but at its most basic, I believe it's a population that shares common social or economic interests. Um, among other factors. And then finally, uh, following existing municipal city, county or local government lines. Um, again, to the extent practicable is another criteria that have been used uh, when redistricting. So I will focus a little more in on communities of interest. Um, so one, another definition is a community of interest, including ethnic and language minorities and other groups. So under the Voting Rights Act, there are three ethnic and language minorities that are protected. And those are Latinos, Asians and African Americans. Um, and while race is a community of interest, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing districts, meaning it can't. Be the first thing that is considered at um, the detriment to any other factor. Um, unless, and this is a, a slightly difficult concept, unless you're instructed to do so by a legal counsel. Who has studied racially polarized voting in a certain area. Um, and has instructed you to create a, a district that would allow a minority group to. Have the opportunity to elect a candidate of choice. Um, and that, again, that, that direction would only come from legal counsel, otherwise. Uh, using race as the predominant factor um, is not allowed. And then the other um, definitions of communities of interest are, you know, these more subjective. Um, things at, such as where people live, uh, if they live close to a certain industry. How they define themselves, students, senior citizens, working parents. Um, what kind of community they live in, whether it's downtown or urban or rural or agricultural. Uh, what kind of, what kind of, uh, if they're a homeowner or a renter. Um, so these kinds of communities of interest are, again, they're, they're not objective. They are. Very subjective based on how people view themselves and their community and the area they live in. Um, and therefore the, these can often be conflicting with each other. So an example I think about, and that comes up often is if you have a region that's. Bisected by a highway or another major roadway. Um, some members of that region may consider that highway to split the community because it's not easy to get from one side to the other. And therefore they are not communities of interest and should not be connected. While other members of the same region who live, whom are neighbors may consider that highway as an artery for the area. And all members of that area who travel from. You know, one part of the highway to another and back for work or shopping or education. Uh, may consider that whole area as a community of interest. And so this is public comment that you may get. Um, and uh. Again, is maybe conflicting, but there's many different examples of what a community of interest um, could be. So in California, we have the Fair Maps Act. Uh, it was passed in 2019. Came into effect in 2020, so is in effect for this redistricting cycle. Um, but I want to preface it that these don't currently apply to community college trustee areas. Although redistricting best practices will likely push most agencies to voluntarily adopt them. Um, but these best practices under the Fair Maps Act are. Uh, the process and transparency when conducting redistricting. Not using incumbent or candidate residents as a community of interest when drawing maps. And not drawing districts to advantage a political party. Um, so again, these aren't required for community college trustee areas, but are maybe a, a best practice. So that is, that's just my quick overview of the redistricting process. Here's um, our timeline for upcoming meetings. On December eighth will be the presentation of the, the draft maps. On January twelfth will be the final passage of uh, the trustee lines. And February first will be uh, final maps will be sent to the county registrar. So I'll leave this up for a minute, so people can copy it down if they'd like. I can also go back later.
Because those are day, those dates listed there, I want to point out to the trustees are different than what's in our packet. We've updated this for tonight's meeting. In fact, it's, it's sooner than what's in our packet. So thank you.
Um, and so then I just want to quickly go through uh, the current lines, and this is the format that when we create draft maps. Um, this is one of the formats that will put it out in the public. It's and, and send to you all. Uh, it just shows at first an overview. Um, and then this is not, this next slide is not something that'll be included, but it is helpful. To show the change from 2010, which was the data used in the last redistricting cycle to the 2020 census numbers, and this is. Uh, adjusted for prison population. Um, so you see. District one shrunk by about one and a half percent. And each other district grew. And so on average, each just, the entire uh, community college district grew by seven point two percent. And so now the current ideal population is ninety-five thousand nine hundred and one. Uh, again, you can have deviations greater and lower than that within, you know, the accepted. Probable ten percent boundary. Um, as you can see, these twenty-ten numbers were. Had a, a slight deviation between each of them, but um, and if I go to the next slide. You can see that we have district one deviates from the ideal population by. Under by ten point one percent. Uh, and district four deviates over by six point nine percent. So that means the total deviation for the current lines, if these were to in effect today is seventeen percent. Um, and so if we're looking for a ten percent deviation, usually no district can be greater or lower than five percent. Um. From the ideal population. But in this, so.
Maybe in a previous slide, you said adjusted for prison populations, adjusted like meaning they were subtracted from that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, um. And so this is uh, AM one of the. One of the um, pages that will come with any, any new map that we draw. Um, will come in this format or one of these formats. And so this has. The population numbers, which include the total population for district. Uh, the deviation in raw numbers and percent. Um, as well as uh, demographic data, but when we're drawing districts. Uh, in terms of VRA compliance, uh, we use the citizen voting age population. Data, which is slightly different. Uh, and so you'll see the numbers are different between the two, but this is what we'll look for. If, if uh, the, if you all are directed to draw a um, a VRA compliant. Opportunity district or um, something similar. And then. All I have left are. Overview pages for each of the seven districts. So um, this includes. The same population and deviation numbers as well as demographic and CVA data. Um, along with. A zoom in of the districts, um, those same numbers in graph form and where the district is on the current map. So. Let's slowly go through each of these. And if you want me to pause on each one, any one of them. And that is all I have for you, but if you have any questions or want me to go back to a, a specific slide, I'd be happy to do so.
So, so just in, without the slides in front of us, what, you can pick the slides down. I don't think we can.
Okay.
Go full screen. What, what's the, what, just repeating again, what are the next steps that we have to undergo? In recognizing that our percentages are off, at least in my district and in district four, they're uh, higher or lower than five percent. So what, what, what is the next step to bring that closer to five percent?
So uh, I'd say there's probably two main ways. Um, and I may not be the most involved in this process, so. I'm sure uh, later discussion will be more specific, but. You could either decide to just adjust the current lines for population, so. Keep the general shape of each district, keep the cores of each district and just move them around um, to achieve that. Lower than ten percent total deviation, probably less than that, or you can decide to completely redraw the, the map or redraw new districts. Um, that, that's a decision up to, um, you know, that's different ways to do it. Um, yeah, that's probably the next step to, to adjust for population.
Okay, thank you. I, trustee Aguilar has a question.
Yeah, you were kind of getting to it. So whose decision is that? Who's making that decision?
Um, that, I'm not sure. I, I. It might be you all. I'm, for full transparency, I, uh, this is my first meeting of this kind, so. I'm usually involved in other, other parts of the redistricting process, but um, I can, I'm. Going to text Kay right now and see if she has a more specific answer for you, but.
That's okay, but let's just put that in the queue as a question that we'll need follow up for, because I realize you, you're without your partner tonight. And thank you for staying up later to do this. Congratulations on your first presentation. We don't need to put you on the spot, but that's an excellent question that I want to uh, acknowledge trustee Aguilar. That we'll all need to know what, what, we get guidance from you through. that we'll all need to know what, what, we get guidance from you through the chancellor's office. What, so what do we do next? How, how do we, how do we, and who makes those adjustments? Any other questions from our, from our board members regarding this presentation? It won't be the first, we'll be revisiting this again. Okay, trustee Richards, go ahead.
I'm pretty certain that after they do their work, the board votes on the redistricting process and how it's gonna, if there are going to be any changes. I'm pretty certain that's how it works.
I, I think Antonio was wondering who takes the piece of chalk and starts, you know, moving the chalk on the map. And do we get?
I think it would, yes, I think it would be S. Marty.
Oh, yes, okay. Well, we get that direction from your firm. That's, I mean, I know that you plan on doing that, but we'll need to know that next. Any other questions from the board? Great information, great data. Thank you, Bryn, for hanging in there. Appreciate your presentation. We'll see you next time.
Thank you. And I do have an answer to that question, but I'll, I'll get a more official answer. But we take any recommendations from the board when it comes to drawing lines. So.
Okay, so that means we get out pieces of chalk or string. Well, thank you. That'll be fun. Thank you so much for your presentation. Moving on to six, 6.3, which is, no, I'm sorry. 6.2, which is a presentation from Columbia College Fire Safety. As, as they're getting on the screen, I want to acknowledge that even though we're expecting rain in the mother lode, we're still within the fire season limit, so it is a concern for all of us. Judy, are you giving that presentation?
I am, and I'm just trying to, to fiddle around with my presentation and, and get it to come where I, go where I needed to go. So just give me just a second here.
I have it ready as well, if you'd like for me to share.
Okay, I think I've got it up and I can make it go from the beginning. Does everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Did it go smaller or larger there?
It, it went a little smaller, but we can adjust it also on this. It looks good.
Okay, all right. Good evening, board. This evening I will be sharing the status of fire safety at Columbia College. Fire safety has always been a priority at Columbia. However, due to the increasing wildfires and drought, our efforts needed to be expanded to ensure the safety of the students, staff and property at the college. The reduction of fire fuels on campus was a collaborative process with college administration, instructional staff, risk management and facilities. Over the last four years, the team has reduced fire fuels considerably by removing vegetation, prescribed fire, dead tree removal, the treatment of fuels by mastication and chipper equipment provided by the forestry, fire and natural resources, campus cleanup and assessment of tree health to support overall forest health. This work led to a positive inspection by A.S.C.I.P. of Columbia College and Baker Station on August 23rd. The findings of the inspection were some minor cleanup that they had requested, that the trees were well maintained, the dorms had a well established defensible space as well as Baker Station. Through the resources of A.S.C.I.P., Columbia College was provided wildfire notifications, monitoring and property protection during wildfires. This proved to be an invaluable asset during the Washington Fire. CFPI was on site the same day they were requested to assist with the safety of people and property. The work by the team, resources that were utilized and partnerships that were formed have provided a safer campus than four years ago. Fire defense is never complete and requires ongoing seasonal maintenance and partnerships. Columbia College and Central Services has formed a cooperative group that is dedicated to keeping fire fuels to a minimum. There's more work to be done and the team is committed to all 269 acres of this beautiful campus. I would like to thank Dr. B., Trevor Stewart, Tom Hostra, Jeff Tollhurst, Dorothy Pimentel and the facilities team for their efforts. Tom Hostra, I believe is in the Zoom. He's told me earlier he was going to try to be here in case there were any questions that the board might want to know from the forestry division or from facilities. So with that, I will take any questions on this presentation.
Thank you, Judy. I have a quick question. So when occasionally I get an email from Columbia College about wood that's available, wood that's available, is that a product of the forest clearing? Or, or how does that come about when, or, or how is the disposal of this biomass done?
Yeah, it's a great question, Margie, and how we handle that at the facilities yard and also with Tom Hostra. When we have product, dead wood, or we have, you know, debris that's removed of a large size that can be considered firewood, we stockpile it and then we sell it by truckloads. That money goes back to a, what we call sustainability account, where we're able to hire students for recycling efforts and other things that need to be done on campus. So it's a sustainable program in and of itself.
Yeah, I figured that. And they, and thank you for pointing out the, the faculty and, and the staff who helped make this all work.
Yeah, they were amazing. It was definitely group effort.
Well, Hostra and Tollhurst, you know, those two guys alone could manage all of, you know, they could do GIS and then forestry management of all of California. They're incredible. Well, any other questions and follow up from the board? This was a presentation we've asked for in the past. We appreciate Judy providing it to us tonight. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Very good. Moving on to 6.3, a presentation for the repopulating and enrollment plans for Columbia College and Modesto Junior College. And we have a few presenters as usual, as usual. But we'll start first with Amy Uribaran and Lorraine Campania with the three-part presentation. They'll be followed by Dr. B. and also by Dr. Java Harrypour. Hello, Lorraine, I see you. We're getting, wait, Lorraine, your, your microphone, there's something wrong with your microphone. It's, it, it's giving off a feedback or something. I think she, I lost, I see the slide, but I don't see Lorraine. Oh, there she, we'll admit her. Here she is again. Let's see. She's coming on now.
I'm very sorry for that delay. Can you hear me now?
No problem. Welcome, Lorraine. Nice to see you.
Um, my low light is to protect an eye. Amy Uribaran had to leave, so I'm just going to do our brief presentation myself tonight. We, if you don't know, are the two leads of our college student health services. And we're going to give a brief presentation as requested on current COVID-19 guidelines. Since our last presentation to the board, there have been no significant changes in the CDC, Institutes of Higher Ed, California Department of Public Health, our two local health departments regarding COVID guidelines. So I'm just going to offer three slides today to review the CDC Institute of Higher Ed guidelines. And the last gives you an idea of the resources that we're currently using in the community college health center services. Next slide, thank you. So again, just to reiterate, the CDC identifies two types of campuses. One is the fully vaccinated campus and which allows larger return to capacity of in-person learning. It includes the general public health considerations in the bullets below. Hand washing, mask mandate, which is in effect as a public health officer order in Stanislaw County. We don't have that in Tohomi County. And then cleaning, ventilation, contact tracing. The next slide reviews what we are doing as a mixed vaccination status campus. This is what we are doing now. And we are doing all the bulleted points at the current time. Offer and promote vaccine, use of masks, physical distancing, hand washing, contact tracing, testing, and of course, increased ventilation and cleaning. So definitely a group effort as we institute these prevention practices. The last slide gives you an idea of what we are, what resources we have that we're putting into play at YCCD and for testing. At MJC, we have the third-party Virus Geeks. We have the Community Curative Lab in Stanislaw County Public Health. At Columbia College, we have the state-sponsored Colors Valencia Lab doing our PCR testing. And we also utilize the county public health county site at our mother lode fairgrounds. Our YCCD facilities is a key component in keeping the structures and rooms and clean. For vaccination, MJC has had Golden Valley Health Center on site. We also refer to the Stanislaw County Public Health Department and utilize local pharmacies and clinics as referral sources. And in Tohomi County, excuse, in Tohomi County, I don't have vaccine on site at the moment. We do refer to the public health department, local pharmacies and clinics. We do have a robust and needed contact tracing investigation. I was actually using some time earlier in the meeting to follow up on some tests that came back today. Through Central Services, we have new, our new, very efficient and wonderfully welcomed HR COVID specialist Katie Pimentel in partnership with the Columbia College and MJC Health Services. We're all working on contact tracing. At MJC, the third-party Aegis has been contracted to help with contact tracing. And there's still a connection with the Stan County Public Health and Health Services all involved in following up on students and recommending isolation quarantine when they can come back to class, et cetera. And the same for Columbia, mostly falls on Health Services, me and the Tohomi County Public Health. So just giving you a background of what we're doing now. So that's all I have for you tonight. And if there's anything I can add or questions, I'd be happy to, to do that.
Lorraine, thank you. All of this data is so important to receive monthly, but I'm not sure if you're staying for the balance of the meeting. And I'm going to steal the thunder of my esteemed colleague Darren Garrett because I noticed in the consent agenda, under personnel transaction items, your name appears as a retiree in June of next year. And what a gift you are to Columbia College and to all of us. And I'm just not sure how in the world we replace you. So it's, well, we'll have time later to celebrate you, but at least I've, I've had an opportunity to tell you on behalf of the board. Thank you so much for all you do.
It's an honor to serve at Columbia College.
Thank you. As part of the presentation, we'll move now to Dr. Bonda Padiye. On the same item, welcome.
Good evening. We'll talk a little bit about the enrollment revival plan that's going on at MJC. This plan has been put together with a lot of effort from all the deans and the vice presidents. I'll just break it down. There are certain activities and some assumptions that we have for this plan. The activities that we have is we are offering a three-tiered enrollment plan for the students. First tier is free college for the spring semester. Anyone who joins in the spring semester, college is free for them. Second tier is those who produce a vaccination certificate along with enrollment. They get $250 towards a bookstore to offset the cost of books. Third tier is those who are enrolling, vaccinated and registering in at least six units or more. Once their deadline to drop passes, they will get an additional $250 for cost of college. Now that money would not be payable before the deadline passes. We are hoping that with that three-tiered, three-pronged approach, we should be able to revive the enrollment to a large degree. On the dual enrollment front, we are increasing our class offerings from 48 to 70 sections. Again, the dean's team, the outreach team has worked tirelessly to increase these classes. We are already in consultation with Modesto CP schools so that we can make this effective. And we are also planning for eight enrollment or registration bootcamps where our folks would be at the high schools to help them, the students register for the classes. So all the kind of objections that we hear that they would not be able to come or there's a problem. This is our team who are going there, doing the handholding, making sure, working with the counselors, they have all the documents and get this enrolled. Number three, we are introducing the customer service hotline, 1-833-MJC-LIFE from 1st of November. There is a complete team. They would receive all the calls. And what we are trying to do is train these teams so that they can either spot, respond to all the questions that they have. And if not, they would get back to the students within 24 hours. So that we have a reasonable time that when you're doing these campaigns, we generate some leads, the leads do not get wasted and we would capture that. And it's 1-833-MJC-LIFE. Forty-three percent of the classes are scheduled to be face-to-face for spring 2022. So 57% online, 43% on campus. And that's very much in result with our student surveys we heard. Fifty-one percent wants vaccination, 49% no vaccination. So if you go half and half, both have options out there. There is one assumption though. Assumption is there is no social distancing. Because for the 43% classes online, as you heard from some of the folks who spoke, some of the faculty members, most of my classrooms are in Founder's Hall. A 40-seater classroom without a six-foot social distancing is 40-seater. When we have a six-foot social distancing, it's an eight-seater. So if that happens in that situation, we will have to move that class back onto the cyberspace. We would not know at this point of time whether we'll be able to maintain that full capacity on campus. But we really don't have the opportunity of reduced capacity on campus classes because we'll decimate our enrollments and increase our costs. State CDC and local guidelines are allowing full capacity if we have a fully vaccinated campus. Now, I do have a meeting with the county department of health for a variety of scenarios. Scenarios are 80% of our students are vaccinated, 20% are tested. Can I drop the social distancing? I don't know the answer to that question. As of now, if you look at CDC guidelines straight forward, either vaccinated or not. But truth is always in the middle. What happens in that case, we are trying to seek those solutions proactively to see that how it goes. But current capacity is full capacity, no mask is only for fully vaccinated campuses. Timeline, our enrollment start date is 25th October, that's coming Monday. Our campaign start date, same, 25th October. Customer service hotline, November 1st. So we have that timeline planned out and we should be launching it around that time. Now, there are some scenarios that we need to consider here. And again, these are all for our thoughts and we would just try to figure this out as we move through this situation. One thing that we know is students do not respond well when class modality changes after they enroll. Any changes in class modality may witness some student departure. Now consider the situation, I'm a student, I enrolled in a face-to-face class. Seven days before the semester, we announced classes now converted into an online mode. I may drop and we would not be able to fill out that position. Similarly, I'm a face-to-face student. And I'm, we're just trying to say that, no, the student was vaccinated, was thinking of coming here. Then they hear that they're accident, unvaccinated students mixed, they decide to drop. Don't know what, what's going to happen in that situation. Now, all of these situations are hypothetical. None of us know unless we roll the die which way it's going to fall. This is the first semester that's going to happen when we will have an opportunity of comparing those campuses which are requiring vaccination, how is their enrollment going? Versus those who are not requiring vaccination, how is their enrollment going? It's, next couple of months is going to be like monitoring and trying to change this. And I hope my deans who are on this meeting, they are not getting upset with this possibility that, you know, we have to change some from online, regular face-to-face mode to online mode or vice versa. And doing this dance until we figure out how we can keep the maximum student population. But these are all possibilities that I just want everybody to be aware of, that we are rolling a die here and trying to see how it goes. Questions?
Thank you. Absolutely. I mean, we're all navigating really, you know. Thank you. Absolutely. I mean, we're all navigating really, you know, just such changing times. Thank you for that. And thank you for the eight three three MJC Live on, which goes live on November first, which really responds to the board's interest in boosting customer service. So thank you for all of those incentives. Any questions from the board before we move to Dr. Java Haripar? Okay, Dr. Java Haripar, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I follow, oops. No, I am on. I follow the presentation from Dr. Man Padeye. So because there are a lot, a lot of items in, at Columbia are similar to MJC. We are following the same incentive plan as MJC has proposed in order to make certain that students on both colleges are treated similarly. We have right now forty-eight percent of our courses scheduled for face-to-face for the spring semester. Thirty-eight percent are online and nine percent are high flex and we have about three percent in correspondence classes. We are expecting to have sixteen dual enrollment courses. Three of them are being bridged from fall to the spring. We have seven correspondence courses with the prison and one C cap of course with the Sonora High School for Nursing Assistant Program. We are following similar starting dates as in October twenty-fifth. Our team, led by our Vice President Duck Sanders, are working really hard on developing the, and implementing the marketing plan, the free college, and then the student financial assistance, as I mentioned, the five hundred dollars, the same as MJC. That's, that's being broadcast on social media. And billboards we have in the Topeka County. And then we have these gas station pump poppers that advertises participation at Columbia College for taking courses. Student services, our student service area are going to be contacting students who were enrolled before, but they haven't been enrolled in this fall to see if we can encourage some of these students to return to the college. Again, as far as the enrollment in the classrooms are concerned, first faces concerned, if we do have some vaccination issues, some the pandemic and the COVID, some classes gets impacted, then we have to move those classes onto either online or hybrid modality. So we don't know how the enrollment in the falls, in the spring semester is going to look like. But we'll do our best to make certain that students are safe, our faculty is safe, and so is our staff and administrators to bring the students back. Is that for any questions you might have?
Thank you, Dr. Java Haripar. I was on campus on Friday. And oh, it was so nice to walk back up those stairs of Manzanita. Hadn't been there in a while. Such a, such a beautiful spot. Any other questions from our trustees? Thank you for those updates about enrollment. We'll now move to associate, I mean, yeah, association reports. And we'll start first with Students' Senate Activity Reports. And we'll go first with Modesto Junior College President Maria Marquez. Hi, Maria.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I'm very happy to see you all this night. And I'll start right away with my report for ASMJC. ASMJC has participated in the Centennial Event. We opened the Time Castle, Time Capsule. We had a special guest, even had past ASMJC presidents from the nineties, which was really cool, to be honest. We gave out cupcakes and sang P D a happy birthday, also congratulating the hundred years of MJC. We also had virtual banned books event, which was virtual. Where, well, where we heard about the different banned books and the reason why they were banned. Pretty much, it was cool to know that there was different reasons. We had members participating and students, and we really enjoyed the event. Also, that MJC held the Thirty-Eighth Annual Hispanic Education Conference where we prepared workshops, activities, music, entertainment and food, not to forget that P D was dancing through the whole event. Also not forgetting that this past weekend, ASMJC held the Homecoming Football, where we gave out T-shirts, goodies, and even had Penny and Penelope on the scenes, pointing out that on the event, we had the nineteen eighty-one football team, where they talked about their victories throughout their academic journey, but as well in their life. I would like to thank every single person that is attending this meeting. This concludes my report, and I hope everybody is safe. Please let me know if there is any questions.
Thank you, Maria. Wow, wow, you've been busy. What wonderful events that you summarized for us this evening. Thank you so much for your report. We'll move now to Columbia College Academic Senate President. I'm sorry, no, sorry, students. So we're on Student Senate President Ricky Lee Corba. I couldn't get that up. Ricky, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, nice to see you.
We've been kind of busy at Columbia. So we are currently planning a Halloween act, or not planning, but getting ready to host an Halloween Activity Week next week, which is a week of on-campus engagement events, with each day having its own dress-up day, just to get the students that are on campus to get to know each other safely, of course, and just feel more connected on campus. We are also drafting a survey to go out to students with a couple of questions like additional funds that Columbia College has and how they should be spent. The thoughts on law enforcement presence on campus and how students would like their supplies to be offered with the absence of our bookstore. I'm really glad to be a part of the Senate. And yeah, thank you.
Gosh, Ricky, I really hope that you'll share those survey results with the board at your next, or a future meeting. Those are great questions. Thank you for your report. We'll move now to Academic Senate Activity Reports, starting first with Aisha Saleh.
Hello. Thank you for your time, Chair Balkan, Trustees and Chancellor Young. We have a lot of meaningful work happening at MJC and some exciting events coming up. We recently finished our program review cycle and have held a program review party to reflect on our process. We're working to ensure that we are a data-informed institution and that the time and labor faculty invest in the program review is used in a meaningful way and in the best interest of our students. We are entering the next phase of our ACCT Institute work, and we'll soon have our next group of faculty selected to lead students in doing community-focused contextualized learning. We received some exciting and thoughtful applications from faculty, and we really look forward to seeing these projects come to fruition over the next year. Our Guided Pathways work is also dealing with contextualized learning. And Dr. B has announced that we're going to be moving toward the reorganization of divisions into schools, which is exciting. A good amount of our Senate work is focusing on part-time faculty at the moment. We are working with Columbia College's Senate on a joint resolution for part-time faculty compensation. And we have partnered with the Office of Instruction to create a comprehensive orientation and monthly faculty learning communities for our part-time faculty. This work is being led by a couple of wonderful part-time faculty who are in our Senate, Hans Hassleman and Maggie Sniffin. They've done an incredible job. And the first event was this last week. It was a great success with about fifty-five part-time faculty attending to learn about their contractual obligations from YFA reps. So thank you, YFA, for coming and giving those presentations. Now for the exciting events, we have Fall Speech Night coming up on October eighth at seven PM. It will be livestream, giving everyone in our community the opportunity to watch our award-winning team showcase their skills. MJC's Art Gallery has a new exhibit featuring our very own Deborah Barr, who will be giving an artist talk tomorrow at five PM during the show's reception. And our Theater Department's production of Clue on Stage is opening on October twenty-ninth, and tickets are currently on sale. It might not be as visible these days, but I'm sharing these because MJC students, faculty and staff are still hard at work. And these are just a few of the events where we can support them. Thank you for your time. That concludes my report.
Aisha, thank you so much for that report and the exciting events that you've announced. That's wonderful. Thank you for your time. We'll move now to LTAC report from Gillian Daly.
Oh, you forgot about Columbia Academic Senate.
Oh, gosh, no, dead, Lana. How could I? My own very Columbia. Sorry, Lana, please go ahead. Our president from Academic Senate. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. I know this is a long day for our board members. Thank you so much for your time. I've been requested to give an update on the common course numbering. So this part of the report is speaking on behalf of both colleges. So Assembly Bill eleven eleven has passed, and to quote directly from the bill, this bill would require the California Community Colleges on or before July first, twenty twenty-four to adopt a common course numbering system for all general education requirement courses and transfer pathway courses and require each community college campus before that date to incorporate common course numbers from the adoptive system to its course catalog. So there's been work done on this statewide. And what we are doing in preparation for this adopted system, once it is given to us, is both colleges, we are looking at our district combined course list to determine where to start with aligning our courses. And we're discussing with the articulation officers at both of our colleges on how AB eleven eleven would operationalize within our district. A little less than half of the courses in a district have a possibility of alignment, while others are specialty courses that are only offered at one college and therefore don't need to be in alignment with each other. Currently, we recommend prioritizing unifying the application and registration process between our sister colleges. A primary concern moving forward with AB eleven eleven is losing any of articulated, or, excuse me, articulated agreements with transfer students, which would negatively impact our students. While there is money that's attached to the legislation, it isn't likely enough to cover the work that needs to be done to complete the statewide shared numbering system. We think there are going to be some unforeseen benefits and consequences of this legislation. An analogy given at a curriculum conference earlier this week said, this is going to be like moving to the metric system. And while we know how well that went, but it's a great idea. We hope that it ends up being a net positive for our students and district. As far as Columbia College specifically goes, this coming Friday, the Faculty Hiring Prioritization Committee will convene to make a recommendation to interim President GH of which of the eight faculty positions currently proposed will move forward on the hiring process. There are six retirements, half of which are single-person departments. So not replacing in those areas means that they would only be part-time faculty to carry the responsibility of the entire program. Students are already registering or getting ready to register, excuse me, for the spring. And there's a lot of questions about how spring is going to roll out in these uncertain times. And maybe the UC Davis model could inform how we can move forward most effectively. In other news, faculty are engaged in recommending the best way to spend some one-time money. Things like an outdoor teaching pavilion tops the list. And other news, Academic Senate of California Community Colleges Area A meeting to review resolutions for statewide change occurred this last week, some of which were supporting students and staff mental and physical health during this trying time and more conversation about AB and eleven eleven implementation, the logistics and curricular work. I got, I've gotten a lot of comments from faculty regarding this resolution that regarding COVID, and they mirrored what occurred in public comment earlier this evening, so I won't repeat those here. Columbia Food Pantry is providing fresh produce, frozen protein items, and even more. You can drive up, sign up, pick up free groceries and walk away with a bonus fifty-dollar grocery card to Save Mart. So we're serving our students in many ways. And our culinary students are also offering pop-up bakery and bistro service on Tuesday and Thursday. So board members, if you are in the area, we'd love for you to come by for a treat. And my last item, I'd like to wish our big sister MJC a happy one-hundredth birthday. You are looking fabulous, my dear. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Lana, that was a great report. And the work you're doing for AB eleven eleven is probably, in my opinion, long overdue. And I'm sure the board would like to hear progress on that in the future. Thank you for that report. Now, moving on to LTAC, Gillian Daly.
Hello, my name is Kelly Thomas, and I'm happy to step in today for Gillian Daly. I am the Columbia College Childcare Center Manager, and so I'm here to give our report today on behalf of the leadership team. And so the Leadership Team Advisory Council continues to work on three items. We've been recruiting leaders to contribute their dues so that we can support the scholarships both at MJC and Columbia College for the students. We've been reviewing the Leadership Handbook and making updates specifically to the evaluation and district-initiated classification processes. We've been continuing with the mentor program so that we can support and train new leadership members as well. Leadership members play an important role at both colleges, as you all know. And we build rapport with colleagues, connect with the community, and we also support student success. So here's a few highlights that we have been doing at Columbia College lately. The CTE Division has eliminated all material fees, thus removing the financial barriers for the students. So that's exciting. And then we have MEOC, which stands for Motherlode Educational Opportunity Center. And they, in collaboration with the Financial Aid and Outreach Departments, are providing in-service, in-person services, supporting the students and with application and financial aid application processes. So they've connected recently with upwards of twenty high schools and some other community partners. And they've been really well-received. They requested, these partners requested the in-person, and so it's going really well. The Financial Aid Office was allocated about two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like choppy on my end. And so they were fortunate enough to receive two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, and this is to support students in crisis in case of emergency, which may lead to them dropping some of their classes and not being able to maintain their enrollment. And so far, they've helped one hundred thirty-four students, and they hope to continue this for many years to come. And then we are excited to launch a spring class schedule that includes two eight-week classes wrapped up into one semester. That way, students will have the flexibility to earn more units and credits in a shorter period of time. And last but not least, we have institutionalized a DEI committee as part of our government structure. We're really excited about that. The DEI mission goal is to start and sustain conversations on campus about diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice. And we have purchased four hundred copies through a grant of a Common Reader book, or we call it a project. And the book is called the, oh, the immortal. Oh, it's something, I don't know the book right now. I've lost my notes on my screen. But so, and the purpose of that project is to keep the campus community engaged in meaningful, diverse conversations. So thank you for your time. Good things are happening at Columbia. It's great to see everybody rising above adversity in these, in these difficult, challenging times. But I see a lot of your efforts supporting the students. That's so exciting.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Kelly, for your report and sitting in for Gillian Daly. We appreciate it. Thank you. Moving now to Yosemite Faculty Association, YFA President Dimitri Kariotis. Are you there? Hello, Dimitri? Are you there? Hello, Dimitri?
Hi, everyone. Greetings Chair Vulcan, Trustees and Chancellor Young. The Board's resolution regarding the COVID testing requirement has bred a flurry of questions and concerns, some of which you heard tonight and during public comment. And I want to share some questions that came to me throughout this week. One, in producing this resolution, did the Board consult public health experts or YCCD's health officers? Two, when will this plan be implemented? Three, is this plan feasible? Four, who will provide the testing? Five, how often will students, staff, faculty and administrators be required to be tested? Six, if testing is required at longer than 72-hour intervals, will this course of action be effective? Seven, who will be responsible for gathering, verifying and keeping track of all of the information related to this effort? Eight, how much will each test cost and how much will this effort cost the district overall? Nine, who will enforce this requirement? And specifically, will faculty be asked to enforce testing requirements in their classrooms, offices and their colleges libraries? Ten, how will individuals with exemptions be handled? Eleven, will classrooms and offices be retrofitted with Plexiglas? Twelve, will social distancing be enforced? Thirteen, will this approach deter students from returning to campus? These questions reflect the anxiety surrounding this resolution, especially as spring semester nears. YFA is concerned because if the testing-only requirement is put in place as such, per the county's health directives, we will be required to socially distance, meaning that as previously stated by a colleague, a 40-student class will become an eight-student class, thus shrinking our class sizes and overall enrollment. Speaking of health, perhaps all in this room would agree on the importance of employees' overall well-being. The YFA hopes to quickly resolve the health benefits puzzle with a creative plan that our district is currently wonderfully flush with funds, puts us in a good position to accomplish this goal, hopefully soon. I conclude my report. Thank you.
Dimitri, thank you. And those 13 points now in the record of this meeting, we appreciate hearing those. Thank you for that report. Moving now to CSCA First Vice President, Interim President Amy Lovett. Hi, Amy.
Hi there. Good evening Chair Vulcan, fellow trustees and Chancellor Young. Sorry, my lights have gone out and I've tried to get them going, but I'm in the dark currently. So first, I would like to inform you that earlier this month, Roberto Reyes attended his resignation as chapter president of CSCA, Chapter 420. We wish the best for Roberto and would like to thank him for his time and energy in serving our classified professionals. On a personal note, I am thankful for being able to work alongside him and forming a friendship. As I am the first vice president, I will be serving our union as acting president for the remainder of the calendar year. The last quarter of the year is rather exciting time for our union. In the months of October, November, we will be accepting nominations for members to become part of the CSCA leadership team. Our negotiations team is currently meeting with the district representatives to collaborate on a model for benefit compensation. The October chapter meeting will finalize this successor proposal for negotiations that should be presented to the Board in November. In early September, CSCA hosted a town hall with Human Resources where we could address our COVID concerns such as processes and protocols, contact tracing and accommodation form, as well as receiving an update regarding vaccination mandate. I would like to applaud our classified professionals as from that town hall sent the daily email from Human Resources notifying the YCCD of any COVID-19 exposure. CSCA leadership had pulled our members regarding the vaccination testing mandate. 57% was in favor and 43% were in opposition of the mandate. Congratulations are in order for our classified professionals who have dedicated their careers to YCCD and have announced their retirements during the incentive period. The years of service is rather impressive. We thank you for your contributions to not just our union, but the betterment of the YCCD community so we can thrive as a campus for our students. One of the executive board's goals this year was to establish and launch our site representative program. Manny Walsh, Second Vice President, and I have taken on this project. We're happy to report that we do have our first site rep coordinator and initial site representatives. Our first official meeting will be October 21st as they follow the Board of Trustees' monthly meetings. One of the main purposes is to welcome in new classified professionals to Chapter 420. With the influx in retirements, our new site representatives will be instrumental in welcoming the newest classified professionals into YCCD community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with the Board of Trustees on behalf of CSCA, Chapter 420.
Amy, welcome. It's nice to meet you and have you. And we do appreciate the sentiments of the gratefulness that we all share for Roberto Reyes's contribution. And thank you for saying that and welcome. And we look forward to seeing you again next month. We'll move now to Faculty Representative to the Board, Alan McKissick.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to address you. My remarks may reference again some things that have been said earlier. But I think my focus is maybe a bit more on what happens next. I know the Board's ad hoc committee worked diligently on the resolution concerning COVID response. The suing discussion shows that the Board knows we must be flexible and nimble in our response to COVID. Obviously, our responses will work in progress. The Board has invited the input of constituencies and that I am sure will be ongoing. Those that know this Board knows that they will listen. Insofar as the chancellor is being directed to develop particulars for our COVID response, it will be a collegial effort. There will be plenty to talk about in District Council next week. Having said that, I need to convey the concern, confusion and downright anxiety I'm hearing in faculty gatherings about managing in-person instruction in the spring semester. I know that Dimitri addressed that earlier. I go to a wide variety of faculty meetings and there's a very similar climate in all of them. Again and again, I'm hearing the need for specifics relating to safety, for example, on the use of social distancing. There needs to be, and I cannot emphasize this enough, a consistent messaging down to the level of division deeds. Now, I know the response to that is of necessity. We are still working out the message. We all know that we must plan and publish a class schedule sufficiently in advance of the spring semester. However, scheduling has always been subject to contingencies and maybe in our extraordinary situation, it should be more so in terms of location and teaching modalities. For example, I am scheduled to teach three in-person classes in Founder's Hall 262 at MJC this spring and we'll see how it goes. That concludes my remarks. Thank you again for this chance to address you.
Thank you, Alan. You know, the term Faculty Representative to the Board, you've always lived up to that title. And I can attest that this month is no exception and really appreciate the, the conveyance of information that you help both sides understand. Thank you so much for your report. We'll move now to 6.5 Presentation Updates, Yosemite Community College District Chancellor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the two academic senates for working collaboratively regarding common course numbering. We have been talking about this for at least the last four years. And now with the passage of AB 111, that gives us more encouragement to get this task done. When completed, this task will immensely benefit our students because it will increase access to the students at both colleges. Also, we have been talking about a district-wide equivalency committee for a number of years. And we see it as a benefit to individuals who are looking to serve as part-time instructors for us. And such a committee would be able to streamline the process. So again, I want to thank the academic senate, both MJC and Columbia for this work. To those who have accepted the retirement incentive, I just want to extend the thanks of the district and want to wish you well. Your names on the personnel list and tonight. So thank you for your many years of service. I attended the ACCP Leadership Congress along with four trustees and I'm sure you'll hear their reports. Finally, I want to extend my sincere thanks to the accreditation steering teams on both colleges for completing the monumental task of the midterm report that included in this board agenda tonight. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chancellor Young. We'll move now to action consent items. We have for 7.1 Approval of Action, Items 7.2 through 7.14. These are taken together as one unless pulled for separate action. Is there a motion approved to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Richard. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I, Trustee Darren Garrett, will second. And before we take the vote, I would like to acknowledge our list of trustees tonight. And yes, I will be doing it as a solo act. Are we ready?
Yes, go right ahead. Someone has their audio on, but go ahead, Trustee Garrett.
I'll power through it. Thank you, Madam Chair and my fellow trustees. So tonight, on the Personnel Transaction Items List, we have 31 retirees. What a history. They span every department, both college campuses and, and a breadth of, again, of history and service, not only to our district community, but to the community at large, which we are bound to serve and are honored to serve. So with that, I will start in with Dan Alcontra. And again, if I mispronounce some of these names, I do apologize. But Dan Alcontra, Instructor of Mathematics in the Science, Mathematics and Engineering Department at MJC, 34 years of service. I want to thank him for, for those many years of service. Lee Bailey, Instructional Support Technician Photography, Arts and Humanities and Communications at Modesto Junior College. I want to thank Lee for 22 years of service. Molly Boyat, 23 years of service, Program Technician Enrollment Service at Modesto Junior College. I want to thank Molly, years of service to our community and to our college. Nancy Backland, 23 years of service, Instructor of Office Administration, Business and Behavioral and Social Sciences at Modesto Junior College. I've met Nancy, it was an honor to meet her and, and I appreciate, as we all do, her 23 years of service. Candace Betancourt, 16 and a half years of service, Program Specialist, Allied Health, Modesto Junior College. I can't speak enough about people in our Allied Health Department, especially during the almost two years of what they've done to prepare students for dealing with this pandemic. And I want to applaud Candace for 16, or 16 years, 16 and a half years of service. Wow, George Bedruckas, 33 years of service, Dean of Advancement and Executive Director of the Modesto Junior College Foundation. I want to thank George for his many years of dedicated service, not only to the institution, but to the foundation and everything that the foundation has done and stands for. George will be missed. Lorene Campania, I'm not going to overshadow what our chair has already said earlier, but Lorene, you will be missed and, and I applaud you for your 22 and a half years of service as Coordinator of Health Services, Health Services Department at Columbia College. You've been instrumental in guiding us through this, this troubled time. Renee Carlton, 21 and a half years of service, Senior Administrative Secretary, Business and Behavioral and Social Science at Modesto Junior College. Renee, thank you for your 21 and a half years of service to, to the district and to MJC. Catherine Clark, 14 years of service, Accounting Analyst, Controller's Office at Central Services. Catherine has no doubt helped us to make sure that we are following what we need to do with respect to our finances and everything associated with that. And I thank her for her 14 years of service. Kathy Demoss, 11 years of service, Reprographic Operator. I'd like to, I'd like more information on what that is, College and Administration at Columbia College. Kathy, thank you for your 11 years of service. Cynthia Forre, 30 and a half years of service, Systems and Programming Administrator, Information Technology at Central Services. Wow, I'm sure IT has changed a lot since Cynthia joined us 30 and a half years and she certainly has worked hard to keep us up to date in that discipline. Kathy Haskin, 24 years of service, Administrative Specialist, Academic Senate at Modesto Junior College. Kathy, I wish you well. Thank you for your 24 years of service and your dedication to the Academic Senate. James Hohen, 21 years of service, Instructor of Electronics Technology, Career and Technical Education, Modesto Junior College. I've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Hohen and no one could ever doubt his, his dedication to, to his discipline and what he believed in, and I wish him well in his retirement. June Hunt, 32 years of service, Program Specialist, Transfer Center Counseling, Modesto Junior College. Wow, transfer and counseling says it all, the impact that June has had on our students and being able to meet their educational goals and, goals and thank her for her service. Cindy Inwood, Executive Secretary, Instruction, Columbia College, 13 years of service. Cindy, thank you for everything that you've done during your time with Columbia College and the district. Terry Yussman, if I pronounce that right, Executive Secretary, College and Administrator Services, Columbia College, 20 years of service. Terry, thank you for everything that you have done for, for the district and service to Columbia College. Kimbra Jordan, 33 years of service, Program Technician, DSPS and Student Services, Modesto Junior College, helping our impacted students in our, in our community and, and guiding them to reach their educational goals. Kimbra, thank you for your years of service. Cindy Kozicki, if I pronounce that right, Bookstore Operations Coordinator, Auxiliary Services and Bookstore at Columbia College, 18 and a half years of service. Cindy, thank you so much in providing learning materials to the students throughout your years of service. Thank you. Dora Lopez, 23 years of service, Human Resource Analyst, Human Resources at Central Services. I've seen many emails from Dora, so I know how busy she has been in her 23 years of service. And thank, thank you, Dora, for your service to the district and everything you've done. Michael Lynch, Instructor of Theater, Arts and Humanities and Communication at Modesto Junior College, 30 years of service. Michael, I know you know the value of theater and, and everything that means to the student and to the community. Thank you for your, for your years of, of service. Anne Martin, 20 years of service, Instructor of Music, Arts and Humanities and Communication at Modesto Junior College. Wow, music, again impactful. It means so much to all of us. We all love music. It strikes us in, in, in many ways. And thank you, Anne, for your 20 years of service to the students in the district. Lubella Martin, 21 years of service, Information Support System Specialist, Technology Services at Central Services. Again, wow, information technology has changed a lot and, and Lubella definitely has guided us in, in staying current during the 21 years of service. Thank you. Dean Miranda, 16 years of service, Lead Mechanic, Transportation, Central Services. Wow, we've all seen our buses on the road, trucks moving around and, and everything that means to not only our employees, but to our athletes. And I know Dean has had a lot to do with that and thank, thank you for your 16 years of service. Martha Rice, 31 years of service, Program Specialist, Dual Enrollment and Instruction at MJC. Again, helping our students achieve their educational goals and thank you for your 31 years of service to MJC and the district. Mary Roslaniac, hope I got that right, Instructor of Chemistry, Science, Mathematics and Engineering at MJC. Wow, anyone that goes into that field, I have the highest respect for because I can't do it. So thank you, Mary, for your 21 years of service and helping our students in this area get into the science and mathematics and engineering field. Thank you so much for your years of service. Liz Rummy, textbook buyer, Auxiliary Services and Bookstore at Columbia College. Again, Liz, thank you for Again, Liz, thank you for your 24 years of service and helping our students get their educational materials and achieve their educational goals. Thank you. Aurora Sanchez, 20 years of service, program technician, DS and PS, student services at Modesto Junior College. Aurora, again, as I've said before, helping our disadvantaged students, students that need it the most and helping them to achieve their goals and and get their education. Thank you so much. Michael Sunquist, a face we've seen many times at institute day, 36 and a half years of service, dean of arts humanities and communications at arts and humanities communication department at Modesto Junior College. Michael, I wish you all the best. I am going to miss your humor and your face and and your dedication at at our upcoming institute days. I wish you all the best. Jeffrey Tollhurst, 26 years of service, instructor of geographic information systems, arts and science at Columbia College. Jeffrey, thank you so much for your dedication and 20 years of service to the district and to the Columbia College community. Trevor Taylor, 22 years of service, information system specialist, information technology, central services. Again, Trevor, thank you so much for keeping us current. Again, IT has changed a lot and you have kept us updated in your 22 years of service and I wish you well. Laugh, deep breath. Sylvia Waterston, 15 years of service, instructor of EMS, career and technical education at Columbia College. Again, I have the utmost respect, given my background for people in the public safety arena, EMS, and especially during these times, everything that your students have done to to get us to the hospital, everything that they have done during the last almost two years of this pandemic has been incredible. Sylvia, I wish you well. And again, I wish everyone on this list, I believe I have it right, all 31 well in in their their retirement. Thank you so much. Deep breath. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well done trustee Garrett. On behalf of the board, congratulations to all of those retirees. There's a motion and a second. We'll move to roll call. Board stenographer.
Thank you. Vice Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs? Trustee Beggs?
Sorry, aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar? I think he might have dropped off. He's been dropping in and out of this meeting. Very good. Trustee Aguilar? Can you unmute?
Trustee Young.
There he is. Trustee Aguilar?
I have no idea what's going on. I having problems with this consent.
We're we're voting, there's a first and a second on 7.1 to approve the consent agenda items. So I'm I'm calling for your vote.
Oh, I thought I guess he doesn't hear me.
Was that a noise?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries. Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to section eight, it's a board policy reading, first reading. Our board policy committee report already highlighted a little bit of this and Kim Gibbs sent us the draft of all of these with any questions you might have had. I had a question actually and she answered it for me, so I'm good. This is only a first reading. Are there, is there any discussion or questions for Kimberly? She's on screen.
Chair Balkan, just one clarification, the board policy committee wanted me to alert the board that there will be additional revisions on policy 5530 complaint policy. They're looking at adding something, a statement, a general statement to the policy on behalf of the board for that particular one. But they wanted me to alert the board that that will come through on the second reading.
Very good. Thank you for that heads up. Any other questions for Kimberly Gibbs as we consider this only as a first reading? Seeing none, we'll move, thank you Kimberly, we'll move on to 8.3. Having completed 8.2 already, is Columbia College College accreditation midterm report? Remember, we have two items here, one for Columbia College and one for Modesto. They are separate items and I echo what the chancellor already said about the credit due to those who worked to put this report together, in particular Brian Sanders and Jennifer, my names are all going. Yeah, I mean, I, my brain. Thank you so much for the work that you've put forth on this. But right now we have 8.3 before us is to approve the accreditation midterm report. Oh wait, one more thing. The ACCJC really extended, I don't know, some, I don't know, nicety by by allowing us to turn this in late because our board chose to attend the conference in San Diego or some of the members of the board. So I want to publicly acknowledge that we appreciate that extension. So is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you trustee Richards. Thank, is there a second?
Nancy Hinton, second the motion.
Thank you Nancy. We'll go to roll call vote for this item.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for a moment, as a point of clarification, I think the motion needs to include that we are going to waive the second reading and then and then on the accreditation midterm report is attached and then approved, et cetera, et cetera, as listed on the agenda. Is that, is that correct, Gressiella?
Yes.
Yes. Amended motion trustee Richards?
I accept that.
Thank you. And Nancy Hinton, second the amended motion. Thank you. And thank you trustee Garrett for always keeping me in line. We'll go to roll call vote.
Yeah, vice chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Very good. Now we'll move to 8.4, the same report from Modesto Junior College waiving the first reading to approve the accreditation report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you trustee Richards. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you trustee Beggs, roll call vote.
Vice Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Or Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to 8.5, personnel, YCCD, YFA negotiations reopeners receipt and and public hearing. So the recommended action is that the board of trustees acknowledge receipt of YFA's and YCCD's bargaining proposal reopeners as attached to this agenda and conduct a public hearing on the proposals. So I will open the, we, I should say, report accepted, but we'll open the public hearing at 8:44. Is there any public comment regarding the reopeners from both YCCD and YFA? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at almost 8:45. And then we, there's no other vote beyond that. Is that right, Gressiella?
If you can accept that and and move it to staff.
So we'll take, take a motion to accept these reopeners?
So move the item.
Thank you trustee Garrett. Thank you trustee Hinton. There's a motion and a second. We will go to roll call vote.
Vice Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Richards?
Aye. Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Very good. Moving on to 8.6, district administrative services, YCTD resolution number 2122.2, authorizing the elimination of student accounts receivable balances. The recommended actions that the board of trustees adopts resolution 2122.2, authorizing the elimination of student account receivable balances and to reimburse the district utilizing higher education emergency relief funds, also known as HERF, attached to this agenda. Is there a motion to accrue?
So moved.
Thank you trustee Richards. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I trustee Darren Garrett will second, but I just have a quick comment. So this is something that's been before the finance committee. The finance committee is approving the item as as agendized, but I just want to make sure that that, because it's listed on the agendized item that that the district will develop process to make sure that student accounts, et cetera, et cetera, do not grow to significant levels again. So I just want to make sure that there's a timeline with DFAC and and district to get that back to to the board sooner rather than later. So beyond that, I'm happy to approve this this item.
So noted. We have a motion and a second. Board discussion, trustee Beggs. You're muted.
I'll defer to Nancy first and then I'll comment.
Trustee Hinton?
Thank you for that. This has some concern in that we have allowed this to continue to go on for quite some time. And sorry, I just lost. Can you guys hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. And I find it that we had changed the requirement under one of our policies where they could not reregister if they were over a certain amount. And the, we were, we were slapped down on it. It was changed to a higher number and I think if we keep it at a lower number, it's within the reason where the students are able to go, so we don't get such a high overage like this. And I'm also concerned of a complete wipeout, which with COVID and everything, I'll I'll agree to it. But you know, there's always, people take hold of something that they have had to be, I'm thinking of the term, but if, you know, if you have to have equity in it, you're going to appreciate what you have more than if it's just given to you for free. So by wiping all of this out, I don't know what we're teaching our students. So I just want us to consider that in the future and we do have a policy that limits how much they can have over and I think we need to hold that policy firm with our students.
Thank you Nancy for that comment. Trustee Beggs and then to trustee Garrett.
I would feel better about this if we had done it at the same time as we were putting administrative procedure 5035 through to the board, because my understanding is, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, are we talking about $3 million?
I I believe from my recollection, the chancellor may have a more exact amount or if Trevor Stewart is is still with us, he may be able to to shed, but I think it's somewhere in that range. Correct, Vice Chancellor Stewart?
Can you hear me? I don't see myself yet.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. It is an amount we're expecting to be somewhat under 4 million when the time comes to actually write off that debt. Again, it is an amount that has grown over a number of years. It's not just recent. And please know that we're taking many steps that we shared with board finance. It's not only the elimination of this debt, it's the implementation of a payment plan and we have gone through the vendor search already and will soon be working towards the implementation of that for what will be fall of '22. And as trustee Beggs had mentioned, the update to board policy 5035, there was that $200 amount. There was a reason for that amount at that time, but as we incorporate a payment plan, we do feel confident that that amount can come down. We've talked about a couple of different amounts, zero, $10 or $50. So it'll definitely be an amount below the 200 that was in there for a period of time.
And and just, I think it it needs to be said that that remember, a lot of the tools that were available to community colleges in the past to collect this money have been removed by the state chancellor's office. So there was a law that was passed, updated, that we can't withhold transcripts anymore, which was a huge tool. We can no longer, there's been a moratorium on accessing a system through the franchise tax board. That has been stopped. So a lot of the tools that were available to us have been have been eliminated and emphasize again what Vice Chancellor Stewart has said, and that is, this has been built up over a long time. Even even the most senior members of this current constituted board inherited a large amount of student debt. So it's been building over time and and I think it's, we have an opportunity with HERF money to to pay it off and at the same time, work through our processes through DFAC and get this thing fixed for the most part. And keep in mind also that a lot of the numbers of student debt were, you know, single digit. We're talking, you know, right, Trevor, we're talking 50, $50, $70. The big ones were were the out of state student athletes. So again, this this was built up over time, over many, many years with inaction from from previous boards. But we have an opportunity now to collectively work with everybody, pay it off and make sure that we have processes in place so we don't have this occurring again.
Thank you. Trustee Beggs?
I think, as I recall, the only reason we know about this is because we've asked about it in a policy committee meeting. And so I would like to be assured that we will get more frequent updates on what's going on with this debt situation in the future. Like if we could, if we could get regular updates, Trevor, including an update on on this policy, I think that would be great.
Very good. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Shall we go to roll call vote?
Yes.
Call the question. It's nine o'clock at night. Let's go.
Yes.
Vice Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
I'm gonna abstain.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Board Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is six, four, six in favor, zero against and one abstention by trustee Beggs. Motion carries.
Thank you trustee Beggs. Thank you. We'll move now to, I'm on page, I'm sorry, it's getting late. 8.7, approval of employment contracts for vice chancellor. Am I in order here? Sorry, just a second. 8.7, yes. We have a series of four contracts in separate action to take. The first one is 8.7. This employment contract is for the vice chancellor of district administrative services. The recommended action is The recommended action is that the board of trustees approves the employment contract for the vice chancellor and district administrative services, but before we do that, I need to read something that, for eight point seven, so pursuant, pursuant to government code section five three two six two, before the board can take action on an item regarding the salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes vice chancellor, the key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes. And the key terms of this agreement are as follows, the term shall be from July first twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth twenty twenty-three, the employee's annual salary shall be on the executive salary schedule, schedule range four, step D, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five, a longevity bonus of five thousand for each year of employment, so long as administrator remains employed for a period of twenty-four months, up to ten thousand dollars, a twenty thousand dollar housing incentive benefit contingent upon twenty-four months of service, and other fringe benefits include health, dental, and vision insurance, income protection insurance, and fifty thousand dollars life insurance policy. And also, before I ask for a motion to approve, a motion should delegate authority to the chancellor to revise employment contracts, including revising provisions to make any bonuses and/or forgivable, forgivable loans, non-pensionable to the extent permitted by law. So with that read into the record, is there a motion to approve eight point seven?
Madam chair, I trustee Darren Garrett moved the recommended action as, as read out and stated.
Thank you, we have a, a motion made by trustee Garrett, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion made by trustee Nicolau, and now we'll go to roll call vote.
Vice chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Come on, look. Aye.
We can hear you. Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to eight point eight, I, I'm required to read something similar, pursuant to government code section fifty-three two six two, before the board can take action on an item regarding the salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes the vice chancellor, the key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes, and the key terms of this agreement for the vice chancellor of educational support services is the term shall be from July one twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth twenty twenty-three, the employee's annual salary shall be on the executive salary schedule range E three, step five, step F, in the amount of two twenty-four, nine hundred and fifty-two, a longevity bonus of five thousand dollars for each year of employment, so long as the administrator remains employed for a period of twenty-four months, which is up to ten thousand dollars, a twenty thousand dollar housing incentive benefit contingent on twenty-four months of service, and other fringe benefits include health, dental, vision insurance, income protection insurance, and a fifty thousand dollar life insurance policy. And as with the last motion, this motion would have to also include delegating authority to the chancellor to revise employment contracts, including revising provisions to make any bonuses and/or forgivable loans, non-pensionable to the extent permitted by law. Is there a motion to approve eight point eight?
Madam chair, I trustee Darren Garrett approved the recommended action as agendized and stated.
Thank you trustee Garrett, is there a second? Thank you trustee Hinton, we'll go to roll call vote.
Vice chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Lost him.
I think we lost him. Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
I think we still lost, I'll mark trustee Aguilar not present for vote, the motion is six zero with one not present, motion carries.
Very good, moving on to eight point nine, again pursuant to education, I mean government code section fifty-three two sixty-two, before the board can take action on an item regarding salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes, in this case, the president of Modesto Junior College, the key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes. The key terms of this agreement are as follows, the term shall be from July first twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth twenty twenty-three, the employee's annual salary shall be on the executive salary schedule range E four, step F, in the amount of two forty-nine, zero four four, a longevity bonus of five thousand dollars for each year of employment, so long as the administrator remains employed for a period of twenty-four months, up to ten thousand dollars, a housing, twenty thousand dollar housing incentive benefit contingent on twenty-four months of service, and other fringe benefits including health, dental, vision insurance, income protection insurance, and a fifty thousand dollar life insurance. And with the motion made previously, this motion needs to delegate authority to chancellor Young to revise employment contracts, including revising provisions to make any bonuses and/or forgivable loans, non-pensionable to the extent permitted by law. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam chair, I trustee Darren Garrett moved the recommended action as agendized and stated.
Thank you trustee Hinton, is there a second? Thank you trustee Hinton, move to roll call vote.
You, vice chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Very good, and moving to our last action item for the night, eight point ten, also personnel, this is the approval of employment contracts for the chancellor Yosemite Community College District, and before the board can take action on an item regarding salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes the chancellor, the key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes, the key terms of this agreement are as follows, the term shall be from July first twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth twenty twenty-four, employee's annual salary shall be three seventeen, zero seven five in, in year one of the agreement, and three twenty-four, three sixty-eight, beginning year two of the agreement, a longevity bonus of five thousand dollars for each year of employment, so long as the administrator remains employed for a period of twenty-four months, up to ten thousand dollars, and a thirty-five thousand dollar longevity bonus, which is consistent with the housing incentive benefit and longevity bonus provided to presidents and vice chancellors, and number five, other fringe benefits, including health, dental, and vision insurance, income protection insurance, and fifty thousand dollar life insurance policy. And a motion to delegate authority to chancellor Young to revise this employment contract, including revising provisions to make any bonuses and/or forgivable loans, non-pensionable to the extent permitted by law. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam chair, I trustee Darren Garrett moved the recommended action as agendized and stated, however, I believe the difference with the contract for the chancellor is that the longevity and housing would be paid upon his separation from, from the district.
Correct, amended as, as, as your motion dictated. Thank you for that amendment to that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you trustee Richards, roll call vote.
Vice chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
I'm gonna vote no, and because I know how rumors get started, I just want to explain that I am very happy with our chancellor, very happy with the work he does, I'm just objecting to the retroactive housing bonus because he bought a home four years ago. So I'm, I'm fine with the longevity and everything else, but I just want to explain that's, that's why I'm voting no. I have no other objections at all.
Thank you trustee Beggs.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
I'm also gonna vote no, and my only comment is that I'm not in favor of the housing incentive, everything else I'm in agreement with where chancellor Young stands.
Thank you trustee Nicolau.
And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, two against, motion carries.
Very good, moving on to board comments, first is nine point one, request for future board agenda items. What's the pleasure of the board, is there a board agenda item you would like to request for future meetings?
Yes, it's been mentioned before, and I know we've gotten some information, but I would like a board presentation on how, how students are doing with online instruction and what the attrition rates are compared to onsite instruction, you know? Because before we had students self-selecting to do online instruction, but right now, we're having some, you know, students forced into it when it's not their preferred mode. So anyway, I, I'd, I'd like to see some, some sort of presentation on our attrition rates in, in all our modalities of teaching.
Very good, thank you trustee Beggs. Other recommended board agenda items? There being none, we'll move to nine point two, comments from board of trustees. I'll go in order here, as best I can see everybody here, trustee Hinton? Do you have any comments, board comments, like, you're muted.
I'll share next month because of the time.
Very good, thank you trustee Richards?
No comments.
Trustee, where's my lineup, number three, four, trustee Nicolau?
No comments.
Trustee Garrett?
Graciela, can you go ahead and bring up my PowerPoint presentation?
Funny, 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 funny.
I just want to thank, first of all, I want to thank everyone who participated in the kickoff to Modesto Junior College one hundred year celebration, the foundation, the associated students, our music department, you know, saw a lot of people there, it was great, it was just a wonderful event, and I want to also extend my thanks to trustee Beggs for getting up and representing this board and, and giving a wonderful heartfelt speech, giving her perspective of, of her time as a student and her time as a, as a trustee, so thank you for that and everybody else. I want to thank President Vaughn Epps from, from Columbia on, on her dedication, working with the chancellor on the course numbering, that's been an issue for us for a long time, so I want to thank her. I want to welcome onboard our new student trustee, I will enjoy working with you and hearing your perspective. And finally, new CSA leadership, first I want to thank Roberto for his, his dedication and his willingness to step up and be, be the president of the classified staff, and, and then welcome onboard the acting president, Amy Lovett, enjoy working with you, and, and I wish everyone the best, thank you.
Thank you trustee Garrett, trustee Beggs?
Well, I want to echo what Darren said about the centennial kickoff, you know, my dad was a student here. So I, I, I was a privilege to speak, and I, I'm just excited about this year and all the events that George has planned. I want to welcome our new student trustee, and I want to thank everybody who shared their views on, on our resolution, we recognize how controversial it is, and, and that there's no pleasing everybody, and we ask for your patience also in dealing with us, and please rest assured that we've spent a lot of time thinking about all of this. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Beggs, student trustee Arshia Amisolaimani?
Yes, just, no, I don't really have a comment, but grateful to be here, excited. Thank you all for having me, look forward to it.
Thank you, and honestly, it's been a long time since our meetings went past eight o'clock, so thank you for holding on. I too want to thank Leslie on behalf of the board for presenting, she read her, or shared her speech with me, and I was so moved by the words that I knew that she would share that day. I also wanted to thank everyone for their input and public comment, difficult discussions over time that we've had, but, but while I know for the record I voted no on the resolution, I am confident that we can move forward with this revolution, resolution, to find a way to keep our campus safe and get, get everyone back to normal as possible. So thank you, and I will get a hundred percent behind that resolution. And finally, I also wanted to acknowledge that, oh, I missed Antonio, wait a minute, is he there? I missed, is, oh, sorry, before, my, I want to get to you before I say one last thing, go ahead, I just didn't see you on screen.
I'm here, that's, that's, that's okay.
The, your reception is not quite there, that's why I didn't see you at first, are you there?
No, I have no comment, the internet has been choppy all, all night, so, I'm here, I can hear you guys though.
Okay, yeah, I missed calling on you because I didn't see you there, so I apologize. Well, lastly, I just wanted to thank everybody, I got a beautiful card from the trustees, and also senate exec, and a number of, a number of faculty from both colleges expressing their condolences for the passing of my sweet mother. So thank you, thank you so much for, for, for really your, your wishes, and I really, really appreciate it. So with that, we move to the, the adjournment, which is ten point one, and our next regular meeting of the board of trustees will be held on November tenth, twenty twenty-one, closed session will begin at three, and open session will begin at five thirty. And with that, and my trustee little gavel, we are going to adjourn this meeting at nine twelve, thank you.